Good morning. The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, February 27th is now in session. Just a reminder, please make sure all your cellphones are off. And if you have conversations that you need to have, please take them outside of the room. In conformance with the open meeting law, I'm reminding you that this meeting is being livestreamed. If you're here to speak in support or in opposition to the project, this is just a reminder that we take everybody's comments under advisement. We take the BRA's, the community groups, the mayor's office. We take everybody's information and knowledge under advisement. So if you're here to speak and you give us new information, please. If somebody has already stated your concern or your issue or the reason why you are in support, please just put your name and address on the record. That will help us keep things flowing. Go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of January 30th, 2018, and January 18th of 2018. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
On the first case for board, final arbiter calling BOA 682-855-13 Shetland Street.
Madam Chair, I recuse myself.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maransy. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Austin. Madam Chair, members, this application was heard and approved by the board on October 17th, 2017. It was an application for a new building, residential building at 13 Shetland Street in Ward 8, a four-story, 57-unit building that, as I say, was approved by the board. The reason why I'm here today is to seek clarification on one of the two provisos ostensibly attached to the board's decision at the hearing. First proviso was a BBDA design review, which of course we understand. The second proviso, I did not do the hearing that day, an attorney in my office did, but I have watched the hearing a couple of times on video. And there was a discussion among board members and between the other attorney and the board about a proviso that would apparently seek to restrict the ability of residents, or future residents of the building to, and I believe the, one of the phrases that was used was complain about business activities in the surrounding neighborhood and their impacts upon any residential experience in the building. There are a couple of issues that I have with the proviso. First and foremost, though, is when I went back and watched the tape a couple of times, there was no real clear indication of what the language should be for that proviso. That's number one. The other concerns I have about the proviso are, this is a residential zone. I understand cases where we have residential encroachment into business districts, and the board has attached provisos to its decisions, usually requiring that language be put either in lease agreements or master deeds, putting residents of the future building unawares that they are residents in a business district and that there are business activities. That's not the case here. This is a residentially zoned district. It's a 3F district.
And it's abutting in industrial...
It's in close proximity to an IDA, an industrial development area.
It's abutting the...
Absolutely. So I absolutely understand the concern, and there was testimony about, by the president of the Neighborhood Business Association, that they in fact wanted people's attention called the fact that they were living in close proximity to a building district. And there were calls for a deed restriction, is the language that was used. So I also have concerns about a deed restriction because a deed restriction needs to be enforceable. It needs to be enforceable by some party in order to be effective. I don't know how a deed restriction here would be enforced and by whom it would be enforced. I also have very serious concerns about any deed restriction that would purport to restrain the ability of a citizen to essentially petition government about activities that are noxious in his or her neighborhood. So my point is, how can somebody be restrained, for example, from calling ISD or code enforcement about an idling truck? That is idling a commercial vehicle, that is idling in violation of the state's anti-idling law. You cannot restrain somebody by means of a private deed restriction from petitioning governmental officials for alleged violation of ordinances or state or federal regulations or laws.
Mr. Maransy, how about this? May I have a motion, please, to have the BRA, who is the planning agency for the city of Boston, do some research and come up with language that will address the concerns that really are at the core of this, is the residential use that abuts a current, very heavily-used industrial area? So that all parties feel that they have a right to live their lives in a normal fashion. Okay? So may I have a motion to that effect?
So I'll move to request a BPDA to investigate possible solutions to the problem.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And can we have that in a month?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Jeff.
So is it a...
So, yes, it's deferred for one month with that request. Oh, call of the chair. That's a good idea. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Calling the next case for G-Cod, calling BOA 792-717-262 Commonwealth Avenue. The project proposes a combination of two multifamily apartment buildings, 260 and 262 Comma Avenue, to one for a total of five dwelling units to be known as 262 Commonwealth Avenue. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, G-Cod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Adam Gilmar from Meyer Meyer Architects, representing the project at 260-262 Commonwealth Avenue, residential building proposal. We received a zoning denial for G-Cod in the groundwater overlay and submitted drawings with to Boston Water and Sewer, which have subsequently been approved, which you have on file.
Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Simonelli, Groundwater Trust. We have the BWSC approval letter and the no harm letter from the applicant as well.
Madam Chair, we have the copy of the letter as well.
May I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Now, calling the 9/30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals to 9/30? Address, please.
12 Carson Street.
For the record, calling BOA 787-985-12 Carson Street. And there's also a companion case, BOA 787-986-12 Carson Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Dennis, both the attorney and Mr. Mculte and Miller, representing the property owner who's with me as well. The reason for the deferral is we had a very late in the process of butters meeting only two or three days ago. Some concerns were raised, and we think we have an opportunity to address in order to be supported on a return trip to the board if we request time to do that, if that's possible.
How long do you think you need?
Well, we have a meeting scheduled in the month of March. We need to get some new plans ready for them, but I would presume we would know sometime perhaps in April, if you could...
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
April 24th.
April 24th? Did you recuse yourself?
I recuse myself, yes.
Thank you. Just for the record, Mr. Galvin has recused himself. And this is April 24th?
Correct.
Okay. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9/30? Madam Chair, we do have a case that's being withdrawn, so I'm going to call it in for the record, BOA 794-741-8894, Lincoln Street. And make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 772-648-46 Hitchborn Street. This is seeking to combine three existing lots into one parcel of 15,253 square feet, demolish the existing structure, and erect a five-story residential building with 46 units and 50 parking spaces. The violation is Article 51, Section 19. A multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 51, Section 19, accessory parking is forbidden. Article 51, Section 20, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 20, the building height is excessive. Article 51, Section 20, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 56, off-street loading is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Daniel Toscano from Drago and Toscano LLP, attorney in law. We're located at 15 Broad Street in Boston, 02109. I represent Hitchborn Partners. To my immediate right, representing RCA, is James Christopher. To my far right is representing Hitchborn Partners, one of the principals, Joe DeGandri. We're seeking your support today to combine three lots, erect a five-story building, have 46 condominium units with 59 parking spots. The combined three lots equal...
Did you say 59?
There's 46 condo units and 59 parking spots.
59, okay.
The three lots combined together equal approximately a little bit over 15,200 square feet of lot space. There's the 46 units, the breakdown of the units, there's six studio apartments, six studio condos, which range from 507 square feet to 538 square feet. There's eight one-bedroom condos at 666 square feet to 825 square feet. There's seven one-bedroom plus, which has a study, which are 746 square feet, 863 square feet. There are 24 two-bedroom units at 873 square feet to 1,187 square feet. And there's one three-bedroom condo at 1,387 square feet. I'm going to go through some of the violations, and if everyone has particulars on the floor plan or design of the property, I'm going to defer to Mr. Christopher. So this is in a local industrial area, which is multifamily is forbidding. So we're seeking relief for that section to put a multifamily residential building. We feel this is appropriate, given the new character of this particular area. There's a few developments going on over in that area, which have numerous multifamily residential units. There's the New Balance project that just went up directly behind us. The FAR, in this area, the requirement is a 2. We're at 3.26. We feel that that's appropriate and seeking relief, looking at the guest street study that was done a couple of years ago. The range for that area was approximately 3.25. We are at 3.26 with our FAR. The building height in that area is 45. The five stories goes up to 57 feet, but we do add open space on the roof. We have 13 private roof decks. We have a community room. We have a yoga room on the roof that brings the height up to 67 feet in height, adding those amenities for the condo association. Wanted to create more, I mean, because it's a condo, home ownership, wanted to create a few amenities to make sure that people are comfortable there and want to stay there. So there's a community room on the roof, yoga room, studio on the roof, et cetera. The rear yard in the area is 12. We are at 4 throughout the rear yard. So that's a violation. We're asking for some relief on the rear yard. The off-street parking and the loading zone parking, in the area, requires two spots for every unit. We're offering one, a little bit more than one spot per unit, 59 parking spots. The parking's going to be in the basement and also in the first floor levels of the parking, so it's in-ground parking. And the loading zone, we're required to have one loading zone. We do not have a loading dock. However, we are designating one parking spot for any, inside the building, for any drop-off, pickup deliveries that is close to the elevator, that is close to the elevator within the building. But we don't have the loading dock, but we do have, designating one spot for folks for deliveries and pickups, et cetera. I will open it up for any questions and then we'll... So those are the violations.
So that's just a single three-bedroom, right?
One single three-bedroom, approximately a little bit more than 1,300 square feet.
And how did that happen?
I'll defer to the architect on it.
It worked in the floor plan, Madam Chair. We thought it would be nice to have a larger-scale unit that was a little bit different than the rest of the building, so we included it.
And how many affordable units?
Six.
Six affordables? Okay.
The potential IDP units are included on our floor plan, but the board has in the package as well.
Okay. And the access to the roof decks, how will they work? Because everything talks about private roof decks, but it looks like it's accessed through public space?
So there will be some common roof deck on the interior of the roof, Madam Chair, but it will also include, the elevator does access the headhouse, and two stairwells access the roof deck as well.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
So you said it's not zoned for a multi-unit. What is it zoned for?
It's local industrial.
It's local industrial. And is cradles to crayons still there on, are they still there? Cradles to crayons?
On Hitchborn?
Yeah.
Don't think so.
No? Not anymore? Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. As the proponent mentioned, this has been through the BRA community process, and it is homeownership. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Ciomo, would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Auston Improvement Association. We have voted several times against this project for many reasons. One, the units are small. We've asked for them to do, the only caveat that they had in this project was that it was for homeownership, but they refused to even put 50% homeownership in their condo documents. So there's no guarantee that it is for homeownership. They won't even commit to that. There's no setbacks. There's no green space. We've asked for green space. Our answer was that there's green space at New Balance. That's really an unacceptable answer. We are concerned about the street. Part of the street, right where the garage comes out of that building, turns into a one-way. They're forced onto a small street that only is room for one car, and it's a two-way. There's delivery trucks there for a commercial that blocks the street all the time. Those things have not been addressed. This project is shy of 300 feet from a large project review. The BPDA public meeting did not go well.
How many square feet?
300 square feet.
From large project review?
Yes. And the BPDA meeting, I was at it, it did not go well. There was a...
There's a lot here.
There was a couple of people in support, but they were commercial users. They were not residents. And our meetings did not go well. We do not support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick response, please.
In regards to the parking, we did redesign the garage, the side wall, rather than brick. We redesigned it to put glass, so there's an opening, well, glass, so you can see any vehicles coming in or out, we'll be able to see on the street. We did add, we're designating a certain amount of funds for landscaping in that area for the streetscape for this particular project. We feel that the unit sizes are adequate. This was condos right from the inception.
I think what we are hearing is that the community feels that they're, and they have a larger sense of what's going on community-wide, of what would be a better fit for them. And it sounds like it hasn't, the conversation kind of stalled somewhere. Is it worth a deferral for you guys, or should we deny it and have you start from scratch?
I prefer deferral. However, we have worked with the community, we have worked with the community, all the director butters have supported the product.
I understand, but I actually know this area pretty well. In fact, I was involved with the zoning all those years ago. So I do understand that, you know, the face of that part of the community has changed. And it's switching a little bit from the industrial to residential and other types of uses. However, since you're really the first big residential project in there, I think it needs perhaps some more time to be thought through in some way. And we would expect the BRA might be able to facilitate that so that, since this is a new use in an area that, you know, has no history of residential use, that it might benefit from a second look. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
The date, please?
We will have a date of April 24th.
Mr. Secretary, can we have a date a little further? I'm back from school vacation that day. So...
You can do May 8th.
May 8th.
May 8th?
May 8th.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 777-271-606 Cambridge Street. This is a new driveway for two vehicles. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, a minimum of five foot from the lot line. Article 51, Section 9, open space is insufficient. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Can I have an address for the record, please?
Nicholas Boitzus, 606 Cambridge Street, Austin, 0434.
Will you be speaking? Yes, so please tell us what you're proposing.
At least two-car driveway to the right of the property as we look from the front.
What are you requesting?
Why?
What are you requesting? Two parking spaces?
We have the parking space. We request to cut the curb in order to get in.
But don't you already have a curb cut on the left that you share with the left neighbor?
We have a shared driveway.
You have a shared driveway on the left that goes to a garage. And now you're asking for a curb cut on the right?
Correct.
So in essence, your property would have two curb cuts.
Correct.
Is this a one-family or two-family?
It's a two-family.
It's a two-family, and you live in the house?
Willing to, yes.
Okay. And so the parking with the shared driveway, will you take that away if you get this one?
Not really.
No? Okay.
It's a shared driveway. We cannot, it's with our neighbor.
The issue is we can't get out of our driveway and the garage because of our next-door neighbor who has multiple people. They've turned a two-family house into a four-family house.
Okay. Tell us about the plans, Mr. Bazani.
I think BPD.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Lady Bob D'Amico, BTD. The plans do work. The zoning I would leave up to the board, but from a traffic perspective, the curb cut does work off of Cambridge Street. It culminates two spaces, Ayton and Pat by 20, bump one in front of the other, but it does work. Now, as far as the other curb cut, that's something that I'll leave up to you, but it does work from a BTD perspective.
And you're a butter on the right where you're proposing this curb cut? What happens there? Do they have a curb cut there or on the other side?
We don't have a curb cut right now. We do not, that's what we're...
Your butter doesn't either.
Okay, so there's no curb cut?
No.
Okay?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Bazani, are the spots tandem?
The spots are, yes, they are tandem, one back of each other. But they start as adequate width from the property line to the houses, looks like 14 feet.
Is there a garage in the rear?
There is a garage in there on the left.
And the right?
No, there's not a garage on the right.
Not on the right.
But they want to have a second curb cut on the right.
Okay, I apologize. So does the second, yeah, can I see that where the second car lands? Does it land out front, Anthony? Does it land in the front yard parking, the second car?
They can hold it, they can hold the parking back so the bumper of the second car is in line with the base of the house.
So it looks like, okay, so tell us, so the issue is that on your property, where you have the current driveway, you have 8.9, or 8.5, 8 feet, 5 inches, and that's not enough room for you to get by from your garage to the...
No, I'm sorry, that's not the issue. The issue is that the house to our left at 604, a two-family house, is now a four-family house. It has at least a dozen individuals in there all the time. They don't understand the nature of the shared driveway. They move in, they leave their cars there, and we can't get out. We end up having fights. We call the police. The police come, says, "This is your problem. It's in your property." We have signs there, both of us, that they say, "Your car will be towed," but it doesn't We end up having serious problems, and we try to solve that by at least putting our cars in the back and eliminate all this fight and all this confusion and all this frustration since we have the space. We try to utilize it and kind of stop the fight, stop the, get a little better quality of life, I guess.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Warren O'Reilly, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Can we please have somebody from ISD go out and see what the issue is with the butters?
Yes.
Because I'm not sure that this is a fair solution to this property owner, that the butters just are lawless, you know? And the property owner allows it to happen.
Yes.
Because we don't know how many bedrooms there are, how many individuals, unrelated individuals are living in that building. So I think, you know, that there needs to be some kind of, some kind of real review of that building.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Ciomo, would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Auston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. We believe this is a quality-of-life issue for the homeowner, and we'd like to support it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. I want to concur with the people before me. This is really, we felt as a community, a reasonable and appropriate response to remediate the situation. There was a change of ownership to the left of them, and obviously, they have no regards for the people to the right of them. And as the proponents were saying, they've had numerous occasions where the driveway has been blocked and their people cannot enter or exit the lot. So we think that this is a reasonable and appropriate response to help remediate a very difficult situation, so we'd like to go on record in support.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
For the education of the board, who is the owner of the left lot?
I am not sure of that.
Who is the owner?
There are two owners, Eric and...
I don't have their full names with me, but I can give it to you.
But it raises a larger issue. Clearly, they came before this board for the benefit of changing it from a two to a four.
Maybe they did not.
I'm not sure.
I mean, that's also a possibility, that it just occurred.
You said the driveway in the left is shared, but who owns the garage?
We do. They both have, we both have the lot.
That's shared as well, garage?
Well, no. Because the entrance is shared.
So you can't get into your own garage?
You can't get in when they block.
When it's blocked?
The issue is that the owner is trying his best.
They have tried.
But we have a dozen individuals that they have friends, boyfriends, girlfriends. They come in, or they're visiting, they leave their cars thinking, "Oh, this is my friend's house," or my fiancee, or whatever, and they leave. They don't think, this is not, you can't be blocking this. There is, there are people going in and out. They don't think about that. They think, "Well, this is my friend's house."
I understand. I mean, I agree with the other board members. I mean, this seems like a reasonable request. I mean, this seems like a reasonable request that you made, but you're in a situation that's kind of ridiculous.
Yeah.
It's difficult.
Because we weren't in that situation for many years, because people respected areas. Now, we have a two-family into a four-family. That didn't exist before. That's the, the major issue, that, that they were allowed to turn a two-family into a four-family.
Well, it-
So how can we-
So the cars multiply.
I mean, the, the, I think our response is not getting to the bottom of the issue.
No.
How can we, how can we deal with this? Any thoughts? I mean, is it, is it, as we've done in the past, ask the abutter to come in, appear here?
If we could do that, I'd be in favor of that. Yeah.
In the meantime, can we look through the records, Matt, and see if this was a legal change of occupancy?
Just a second.
Okay? So may I have a motion for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We will do April, we'll do April 10th.
Okay.
But don't we have the proviso on that?
Yeah.
That says that the purpose of the deferral is in fact to bring the-
The abutter in.
The abutter in.
It's two-part.
Yes.
It's one to bring the abutter in, and two for an I S D review to see whether that, what, what is happening on that property, whether that change of occupancy was legal or not.
I mean, regardless, it seems to me if that's your garage and you're being blocked from using it, there's a fundamental problem there.
And also, my, my neighbor, Eric and Kevin, both of them, they do, they, they honestly, they do support, they understand. We are together, we're fighting together.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
Do they live in the house, sir?
No.
They don't?
So it's, it's an investment property. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will see you back on April 10th. And, and will somebody please contact the abutter? Thank you. Calling the next case?
Calling the next case, calling B O A 777-449-606 to 610 Center Street. This is amend an occupancy of one retail, one nail salon, laundry, and doggy daycare with accessory retail, two, the doggy daycare, nail salon, laundry, and doggy daycare with accessory retail services. The new doggy daycare space requires no work and will function solely as a playplace for dogs. All dog washing and retail service will remain in the existing doggy daycare. I could say that 10 times. The violation's Article 69, Section 11. Doggy daycare is used as forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm located at 1990 Center Street, West Roxbury. I represent the applicant in this matter, Ms. Baxter, who unfortunately has the flu and couldn't be here today. She's the owner and operator of Fancy Schmancy. We came before this board three years ago to seek relief, to allow her to open her business, Fancy Schmancy. A doggy daycare is by default a forbidden use in this area because the code doesn't list doggy daycare in the use table, so it defaults as forbidden. And this board extended that relief three years ago. What we're asking today is if you look at, she's basically expanding her operation, her business is growing, she's done very well, and she's, she's meeting a serious need in the community. But if you see the building, that 60, it actually goes 610 to 606 Center on the front page, what the, the unit, all the storefront all the way to the left has become vacant. And so what she's seeking to do is to legalize that as doggy daycare, and that space will function solely as playspace for the dogs. Whereas, when we came before the board three years ago, the first space included bathing and grooming stations, and so she's just looking to expand, she can accommodate more dogs. She's, has currently hired six local employees. They're not 1099 workers, they're actually employees. She can get up to 10 with this expansion. She can add up to 25 dogs as well, so.
So this, at number 606, this is supposed to be playspace, is it? And the original space will remain car wash, I mean, dog wash, sorry?
Yes, and there is some retail that was allowed as an accessory use on the original space.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawing are accurate.
Any questions from the board?
What, what, you said it's vacant now? What was it before?
It was a retail establishment, it's like a general store. And actually, I should mention, just by point of order, in the I S D refusal, I'd just like to indicate, they incorrectly cited a high-part provision of the code. I, I don't disagree that it's considered a forbidden use, but it should indicate the violation under Section 55-16. Further recognition-
And it's forbidden because it's not listed as a use in the use item table?
That's correct.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Alexandra Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support and also state that the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council offered their support.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Will Pop Webster with City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office, representing Jamaica Plain. We would also like to go on record in support. We've talked with the applicant, it seems like a reasonable expansion of an existing business. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan of the Office of Councilor, Michael Flaherty, Councilor, we would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to walk, to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling B O A 792-532-23 to 25 Chestnut Square. This is creating one parking space on the premises. The violation's Article 10, Section 1, a limitation, is this Chestnut here? Hold on to the side. Calling the next case, calling B O A 786-872-53 Orchard Field Road. This is to enclose an existing rear porch on the second floor for a room to incorporate the attic area. The violation's Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stuart Schreier. My address is 1005 Dorchester Avenue in Dorchester. With me is Kim Nguyen, who is the owner, occupant of the property.
Tell us what's being proposed?
First, I just want to correct, I think you said Orchard Field Road, it's actually Orchard Field Street.
Okay.
I said, I correct you, you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my client is an owner, occupant of a two-family home. This neighborhood has particularly small houses in this area. She has, on the first floor, an apartment that's about 600 square feet. She has the second and third, which she uses for her family. The second floor is also about 600 or 700 square feet, and, and she has an attic which has one additional bedroom. Her whole apartment is about 1,000 square feet, a little under. And her family is growing, she has two bedrooms now. What she wants to do is enclose the back porch. She's not changing the footprint of the building. And then within the attic, the attic is only the front half of the building, she wants to extend the attic the full length of the building. What would that leave her is approximately 1400 or 1500 square feet. With the first-floor apartment, the total square footage would be about 2,300 square feet in the building. The lot size is very-
Excuse me, so the side yard is an existing violation?
And that's not-
What's, what's the F A R that is required?
The F A R that's allowed is .5. With the addition, she'll be about .7 to .8, in the right area.
Okay, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the attic?
I believe it's full, it's a full-height attic in the center. You know, it's got, it's got the pitch room, so you got a, and it's an hour. The attic is only about 11 to 12 feet wide, the usable area. She didn't extend it out so that you have the really low ceiling heights of the attic.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are accurate.
Yes.
And, and it clearly shows that she's not including the new wall space in the square footage.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Quarr Pham from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record in support of this project. We had a meeting with the local civic group, Freeport Adams, and they received full support and no opposition from the abutting snapers. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling B O A 793-541-21 Pevril Street. This is to add a new roof deck and spiral stair. The violation's Article 65, Section 9, the height is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article 66, Section 9, the height is excessive. Article 80, Section 80 E2, small project review. And Article 65, Section 9, side yard setback requirements is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Matthew St. Peter, 21 Pevril Street.
Arthur Chu, One Village Road Architect and Project-
Tell us what's being proposed, please?
We're proposing a 250-square-foot deck on an existing three-family house. All the violations are created because it's an existing non-reforming side yard height and rear setback.
Dimension regulations, and why is it subject to small project review?
I think that's because of the district it's in.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Plans are fine. It shows a small deck on a roof.
And what's the access?
On the second stair.
Okay.
Off the, off the rear deck.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
One, one question. This is for the exclusive use of this tenant, don't we?
Yes.
The applicant, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Flavia De Vega, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Service. Would like to go on record in support of this application. We have community support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McGekren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling B O A 757-560-27 to 31 Woodford Street. This is to erect a new three-unit townhouse building and parking beneath. The violation's Article 50, Section 29, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Stuart Banco. I'm architect at Banco Studio Architects, located at 407 Dudley Street. I'm representing an owner, occupant, who owns a three-family building next door. This is a vacant lot that he purchased at the same time. Wonderful family, who is-
Tell us about a, tell us about the project, please.
Yes.
What's the zoning district, how many square feet? All the vital stats on this.
It's in M F R district. And it is located, just graphically, just so everyone can get an overview. The owner has a three-family building here, there's a vacant lot next door to his property, and it overlooks Salvation Army, playing field. Dudley Street would be right here. So, just to give you some context, it's, it's a, it's a normal lot, but it's a beautiful lot. And you can see that there are many missing lots, and there probably was a building here at one time. So, getting down to the numbers, it is a 3F 4,000 district. So this lot, although he purchased it at the same time, it is a small lot for the area.
What is the size of the lot?
2,600 square feet.
And this is a 3F 4,000?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and tell us, tell us how, what's, what is a townhouse? Is it, is it going to have the same pattern as the rest of the houses around that look like pretty normal triple-deckers?
It does.
Excuse me, is it a 3F 4,000 or a 3F 6,000?
3F 4,000. The district is. We have a, the lot that we are proposing on is only 2,600 square feet in a, in a 3F 4,000 district. Here's a rendering of the proposed project next to the field, and the concept is that the townhouse has a direct link, its own entry doors on grade level. So although it's three units, they each have their own entry, they have parking below the building, and the idea is that they're not, no one is living on top of one another. It's not flats like a triple-decker would have. So it's a little different in that sense, and we have the lot depth to be able to do that. Our violations are primarily side yard-related, and we favored the building to the playing field edge, partially because we know that there will never be a building built there conceivably ever in the future.
So tell us about the parking. Is, is the parking within a garage, or is that just empty space at the bottom?
It is, it's open parking. It's not technically an enclosed garage, but there is parking below. I actually have that in a floor plan format here. So this is what the ground level would look like, and there would be a series of individual vestibules for each townhouse, and then parking spaces associated. So it's a, it's a one-to-one ratio for parking to unit.
But tell us about your violations, then. You have side, rear, height, and F A R. Can you speak to all of those, walk through them?
Absolutely. So our height issues are, we're asking for relief, not a lot of relief, just a few feet. 35 feet is the max. We're asking for 42, and it's simply because we are hiding our parking below the building. We think that we're hiding it in a way that the neighborhood, you will hear momentarily that we had this wonderful neighborhood process, we've had excellent support for this, and partially, partially it's because we're hiding our parking, which drives the building height up. I think that from an urban design standpoint, that's a very positive thing, and it was well-received. The side yard violations that we have, and really our yard violations in general, are because we are trying to build a building closer to the playing field. We're doing a zero lot line on that side, and, and the thinking is that we will never, there will never be a building built on that edge.
Who owns that parcel?
That is the Salvation Army.
It's the Salvation Army, not Parks Department.
That is correct. That, that parcel is, is a component of that, of that, of that playing field. It will never be sold off, utilized for any other purpose.
How do you know that?
You don't know that.
The land is valuable, that is true. I think that it would be difficult to propose a building on that site. First of all, it changes grade. Woodford Street, hard to see from this photo, but it's actually quite higher than this. It's a large grade change.
So you're, you're a zero lot line, therefore, were you cited for building code violations?
So, no. I, I think it-
Why not?
Surprisingly, we, I'm not sure, because we are zero lot line, and we know that any openings on, on that property line would require a fire shutter. So on that, on that park, that park edge, I think our intention would be that we would procure some kind of agreement with that Salvation Army, and that they, they would never sell off that parcel.
Well, before you come to us, you probably need to get all your ducks in a row, okay? So the question is, is this deferral, or is this denial without prejudice?
Well, it, it's a very good project. It has a few unanswered questions, and I would recommend that it not be denied without prejudice, but that if we defer it, and you come back minimally with statements from the owners, that they are never going to build on this.
Yeah.
Which I, I don't know how much that really works unless they put it in the deed, but I don't know.
Would that be an acceptable, thank you very much, would that be an acceptable route that we could get a commitment by this owner, that the parcel would not be?
I mean, we'd have a different level of comfort if we knew it was a dedicated park line through the Parks Department, but, but it's not. So we just need to make sure that, you know, if there's building code, we always have to look long-term.
Excellent.
You know, and so, so that's, that's why. So there's a motion for deferral, is there?
No, oh, you should go to the floor.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We are going to go April twenty-four.
Excellent.
Okay, we'll see you then.
See you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA seven-nine-six-seven-six-four, one-thirty-seven Amory Street. This is construction of new residential building, an parcel to be subdivided. The new structure shall be detached. Four stories in height from street grade. Bottom story will be one-eight construction, four stories. The building will have sixty-two units. The violation is article twenty-nine, section four. This is the G Part applicability, the Green Belt Protection Overlay District. Article fifty-five, section nine, the lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, section nine, the height is excessive. Thirty-five feet is the height maximum allowed. Article fifty-five, section nine, the height is excessive. Three stories height, high max, is allowed. Article fifty-five, section nine, usable open space required is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section nine, the front yard setback requirement is insufficient. And article eighty, eighty-B dash two, application to large projects review. Off-street parking and loading area will be determined through the LPR process. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Emily Loomis with Urban Edge Housing Corporation, located at fifteen-forty-two Columbus Ave. in Roxbury. I'm joined today by Kendra Halliwell with Icon Architecture, and Joe Lieber, attorney with Klein-Hornig. Thank you for your consideration of our application. Our request is for certain zoning relief on the new construction of sixty-two apartments, all of which will be affordable, to be located at one-thirty-seven Amory Street. The proposed building will be located on what is currently a six-acre site owned by the Boston Housing Authority. That site currently has a building with a hundred-and-ninety-nine apartments for very low-income senior and disabled residents. In 2015, the Boston Housing Authority selected Urban Edge, the Community Builders, and Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation to redevelop the entire site. The proposal calls for the subdivision of the six-acre site to allow three new buildings to be constructed, one of which is one-thirty-seven Amory, the subject of this application. The goal is for those new buildings to provide economic benefits that support the goal of renovating the existing a hundred-and-ninety-nine affordable senior apartments. The master plan for the site has secured article eighty approvals and B C D C approvals. Because each building will sit on its own subdivided lot, each building is requesting zoning relief independently. I'll turn it over to Kendra Halliwell to speak briefly about the design and relief requested.
So please, before you step off, I know we've seen a number of the projects already. So can you speak to this particular project, and also to the parking? And for the record, Mark Fortune has recused himself. So, go ahead.
Well, first, can you hear me?
Speak up some, because this is, this tapes, it doesn't amplify.
I think this is the first time you're seeing this site in particular. I know that we've been to see you with a site up this street.
Right.
But this is the first time, first project on this particular parcel.
Yes, so tell us about this.
I would love to. I'm going to use the boards as official.
So as Emily mentioned, the site itself, we've been working with the constraints and, and the adjacent community, the neighborhood, what the buildings look like as we design each of the buildings. So just for some context, here's Amory Street. This is Atherton, and the train line runs along the rear here. So the site we're looking at is the southernmost building on this site. The site slopes from front to back, so Amory Street is up early on, it slopes down to the T at the back. So we worked with that in designing the building. We have here a, a street elevation that shows the context, how we put some thought into the scale of each of these buildings on the site. Our building, one-thirty-seven Amory, sits between the large seventy-foot scale of the one-twenty-five Amory senior building and the Victorian homes just on Atherton. So we've really put some thought into that. On Amory Street, this building is four stories tall, but down at the back, it is, back here, it's five stories. So we've, we've worked to make the scale small where we're relating to the neighbors. Narrowing in on the, on the parcel itself. South is at the bottom of the page. And Amory Street is along this side. We have one main entry here on Amory Street, and a second entrance down here at the lowest level down below. And this is where the elevator core is. We also have a small community space, body storage, and management office are down at that lower level, accessible to everybody. In designing this building, we've, we've taken into account, put some thought into the JP Rocks future zoning plans there. So we've respected the twenty-foot setback along the southern edge, as well as incorporating a step back above the third story, I believe, on, on this edge and on Amory Street. It actually gives a nice, a nice scale to the building. You can see that step back here. We've treated that, taken that as language around the building as well. We've broken the massing up, you can see from the footprint, we've broken the massing up to be reminiscent of the scale of a traditional triple-decker in Connecticut. We've also brought in some playful colors to, to celebrate the idea of shutters or Victorian treatments also elsewhere in JP. So here's the view on Amory Street. Here's the view from the central courtyard amongst all the other buildings as well, with the main entrance highlighted here. I'd like to just briefly touch on some of the zoning aspects here, the difference with areas of relief that we're looking for. For lot area, the requirement is sixty-three thousand square feet. We're just under that at fifty-two thousand eight fifty-six. For FAR, the allow is one. We're at one-point-three-two. Just to point out, our, our lot area has been worked out across the whole site, and so our parcel for this building covers this area that you can see highlighted there where the detail is. For height, the allowed height is thirty-five feet, three stories. We are forty-four feet at Amory Street and fifty-five feet at the back. We did the calculations, and it's just under fifty feet for the, for the building height. For open space, we're required to have nine-thousand-three-hundred. We think that we have about ten-thousand square feet, but this is, as a safety factor, this is on the list. For the front yard setback, we're required to have fifteen feet. And we are, the building face is fifteen-point-seven feet from the property line, but the property line and the sidewalk don't align. We're also, as part of the redevelopment to the entire site, the sidewalk is going to be improved along Amory Street. Right now, the sidewalk there is narrow, it doesn't feel very safe, so as part of the overall project, that's going to be widened. So we're set, the building will be seven feet back from the widened sidewalk. So there's going to be a planting strip, parked cars, curb, planting strip, and then a wider sidewalk, so it'll all push.
And tell us how the parking is going to work?
Yep. Good question. For this building, this building will have whole surface parking, and you can see there's two sides of parking on parallel sides of this street, as well as on one side down here, as well as a head-in parking down, down here at the end. Now, the bottom of the parcel abuts MBTA land, and so I think we've, we've come to you before with a similar situation, where some of the parking is allowed to be on MBTA.
Okay.
Please, the parcel is currently to the left of one-twenty-five, and I visualize that it's currently parking there now.
Over here?
With grass and parking?
This here right now is, it's parking for the residents of one-twenty-five.
So will they, will they lose spaces from?
Yep. It's, in the larger vision, here we are, the parking that was over here is going to be relocated to over here. So we're maintaining-
There'll be no loss of, of?
Correct, correct. There're going to be, let me say, fifty-four parking spaces to maintain that concept. You're welcome.
And the, how many dwelling units?
In this, we'll be sixty-two. Overall, I think we're adding three-hundred.
Around three-hundred-and-fifty.
And what's the breakdown on the sixty-two units?
A hundred percent of those units will be affordable.
How about one, two bedrooms, the number of bedrooms on this square?
There are nine one-bedrooms, thirty-seven two-bedrooms, sixteen three-bedrooms.
Thirty-seven two-bedrooms and sixteen three-bedrooms?
Thirty-seven two-bedrooms and sixteen three-bedrooms. So it's primarily large, which geared towards families.
Excellent. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Can I have the representatives of elected officials up first?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Alexandria Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record to support. We've had a lot of community meetings, as well as the Butters meetings, and everyone is in full support. I would also like to state that this Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, as well as the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Zoning Board, also approve this project.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Ronald Claude from Councilor Yana Presley's office, and we'd like to go on record as supporting. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Willpoff Webster with City Councilor, Madam Alice's office, representing JP. We also want to go on record in support. We think this adds badly needed affordable housing in the Jamaica Plain area. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez from City Councilor-at-Large, Anissa Savi George's office, and the council would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Leona Poston from State Representative Liz Malley's office. The representative is really thrilled to see some additional affordable units in the neighborhoods. A common thread of conversation in the neighborhood, and the developers have been really responsive to residents' concerns during IAG meetings.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Kate Bennett with the Boston Housing Authority. We're a co-sponsor of the project. We designated the developer team. It's a critical project to our low-income seniors and disabled folks at the site, who are currently living in a deteriorated building, but we're also thrilled to be able to add additional affordable housing to the site. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, my name is Bryce, representing the Carpenter Gini. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Tom Gannon, I'm the Housing Development Officer of the Department of Naval Development. I'm here to speak in support of the sixty-two affordable units, part of Mayor Walsh's Housing Twenty-Thirty Plan, and we ask you if you're consideration as support. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is George Lee with Keep It Undred for Real Affordable Housing and Racial Justice, and just four quick points on why we support this project. It's in the Plan JP Rocks area, and so four things we were looking at were, one, does it meet the standards of Plan JP Rocks? And the developers have worked to make the design meet the guidelines of Plan JP Rocks. Number two, there's an intention in Plan JP Rocks to prevent displacement, and to make sure that developers aren't trying to build new developments while kicking out tenants down the road, and Urban Edge is not in the business of displacing folks and raising rents on folks to displace them. Number three, there's a lot of units that are affordable to folks at the lowest income levels, making less than thirty thousand a year. Urban Edge is applying for vouchers that would make up to twenty units available at those income ranges or slightly above. And number four, this is being built on public land, but it's a hundred percent affordable, and so it's a very clear example of public land for public good. So we're just bringing these up because we'll probably be back here in the future as other developments come forward in Plan JP Rocks that don't meet all those four criteria, but we're glad that this one does, so we stand in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nick Monks. I'm here representing Sea Life, Peter Urbana, a housing justice organizations whose office is down the street on Amory, speaking in favor of this project, especially the sixty-two units of affordable housing, which is obviously greatly needed. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Juan Torres, and I'm here representing the Community Builders, part of the development team, and we're here in, I'd like to go on record in, in support of the project. We've worked with Urban Edge, as well as partnered with them in multiple projects within the city. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Jones. I am a resident of New Academy Estates, as well as a community leader. I live within a half of a mile radius of the development that is looking at to take place. I stand, I am in support of Urban Edge's goals and what they're accomplishing. On a personal note, there's families that I know that have been displaced through all of the building that is happening in the community, which is not affordable for the people that are in the community. People who are state workers are losing their homes, working for the state, and cannot even afford the housing that is being built in the community. And for that reason, I stand and I support the affordable housing that is being presented.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Rothschild. I'm a senior community organizer at the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation. I'm here in support of Urban Edge's proposal, and we've been working in partnership with Urban Edge on the site for the past two years. There's been a robust community process, over ninety coffee hours discussing this, and as part of our mission, we support the addition of affordable housing in the gentrifying JP. So thank you.
Good morning. My name is Aleah Hakom. I am the Community Engagement Office, sorry, I'm the Associate Director of Community Engagement. We will continue to work with the residents who move into this new development, providing services and assistance, and continuing to progress their economic development, hopefully when the project is built. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Judith Lamb, and I'm one of the, a tenant at Urban Edge, seventy-one Westminster in Roxbury, also a group leader there for the community, and I do stand in support of the affordable housing, because that is what our community really needs this time. Thank you.
My name is Margaret Nosan. I'm the coordinator of the Jamaica Plain Coalition Tree of Life, Arbol de Vida, and I'm really enthusiastic about this piece of property, because it does afford a lot of larger units, which are desperately needed in our neighborhood. So we really hope you support this.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Board members, thank you for your service. My name is Luis Coto, Executive Director of Eggleston Square Main Street. We're big fans of the entire development, but today we're here to speak specifically in favor of one-thirty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Gary Walker, Electrical Workers Local One-O-three, like to speak in strong support also. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have additional support letters. We'll leave.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Now, before we make a decision, I know there's a lot of you that we've heard from. We have other cases on our docket, so we, please ask you to leave the room quietly if you can, so we can move on with our agenda, okay? Take your conversations outside when you're done. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA seven-five-six-nine-nine-nine, seventy-one to seventy-three Brookly Road. This is a subdivision existing lot of eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-six square feet, the two separate lots, lot one to be four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-two square feet, with the existing three-family to remain, and lot two to be vacant, four-thousand-six-hundred, four-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet. The violation is article fifty-five, section nine. The new proposed lot creates an excessive FER for an existing building. Article fifty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient after the proposed subdivision. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Anthony Ross, three-forty-three Belgrade Avenue in Roselandale. And with me today is the applicant's spouse and co-owner, Smith Santis.
Tell us what's being proposed, please?
What's being proposed is, we have an existing three-family, I've handed up the photographs, that's on a double lot in, on Brookly Road in Jamaica Plain. The lots on that side of Brookly Road are all fifty feet in width. I have a copy of the nineteen-twenty-six subdivision plan that shows that these two lots are typical of the street. And what's being proposed essentially at this time is just to legalize the three-family on one of those two separately de-described lots. Over the years, the lots have been in common ownership, and so they've merged for assessing and zoning purposes, and what we'd like to do is just simply divide them back into lots thirteen and twelve, as they were in the nineteen-twenty-six plan. And the purpose is that the, the longtime owners are planning to sell the three-family house on its separate lot and retain the vacant lot for future development for a home for themselves.
So seventy-three is the, is the, what's the address for the vacant lot?
Vacant parcel doesn't have an address, because there's no structure proposed for it at this time.
Okay, so this is just purely a subdivision?
This is purely a subdivision, and the violations are just in regards to the three-family on its de-described lot.
And what's the zoning district here?
It's a three-F-four-thousand zoning district, and the two violations are very typical for the area. The side yard- The side yard violation is less than a foot, and the FAR violation is just about 400 square feet, which is, again, very typical for this section of Brookly Road.
What are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
For the subdivision, they're fine.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Alex Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record to support and also state that the JP Neighborhood Council offer their support as well.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling next case, calling BOA 781-676-1027 Tremont Street.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I refuse myself.
This is to change occupancy from two residential units and store to three residential units and restaurant with takeout, also to erect a fourth-story addition with roof deck. The violation is Article 50, Section 43. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 11, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 11, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 11, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Daniel Toscano from Drago and Toscano LLP, Attorneys at Law, located at 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass. 02109. I represent Sednaugh, who's to my far right, who's the owner of the property located at 1027 Tremont Street. To my immediate right is the architect of the property of Bill Parquette. So we're seeking your support to change the legal occupancy from what it is, it's currently two residential units and retail store, to three residential units and restaurant with takeout. Right now, the existing first floor has the retail space and unit number one, which extends into the basement. What we're going to do is change the first floor in basement to the restaurant use, sit-down restaurant, and the downstairs will be used as the kitchen area, prep area, and storage. On the first floor will be the seating area, hostess area, and the dining bar for the restaurant. The second floor and the third floor will remain as two-bedroom units. We will be adding a bathroom, so they're currently two-bedroom, one bath. They'll be proposed as two-bedroom, two-bath, and the fourth-floor addition will be a two-bedroom, two-bath residential unit as well. By filing this petition, we did trigger some violations, the off-street parking. The off-street parking was short one parking spot, one parking spot per unit, which would be for the new residential unit on the fourth floor. For the restaurant, we are in a parking restricted, a restricted parking district, so there are no parking requirements for the restaurant space. The floor area ratio in this district, which is the greater Roxbury Economic Development area, is two. We are already, this is a pre-existing violation, we are at 3.6. By adding that addition, we are going to 4.3. The open space is requirement is 50 square feet per, per unit. Currently, there is 70 square feet for unit number two, I believe, on the second floor. However, we are only, we are shy with the violation, because we are adding 400 square feet of a roof deck, private roof deck for unit number four, and we won't meet the requirements for unit one for the 50 square feet of open space.
Are you required to provide a handicapped unit?
A handicapped unit? I'll defer to Mr. Parquette, I don't believe so.
No, no. Okay. And the access to the roof deck is going to be?
The access, it's exclusive to the fourth-floor unit. Is it going to be inside or up to the main stair?
Interior.
Interior stairwell.
Okay.
And the dimension of the rear yard, we are, it's 20 in that particular area, we are using the current structure that occupies the entire plot, so we are in, it's no changes, that remains, and we are in violation.
How are the plans, Mr. Erler?
The drawings are adequate.
And I just want to make clear that today we are only looking at the change to include the additional unit, because a takeout wasn't cited in the violations, unless there's an existing takeout.
There's not an existing takeout, but it wasn't cited, but we believe as a, as a sit-down restaurant, less than 75%, I believe, of the sales will probably.
If it's as a variety.
I believe, yeah, I believe it's the rest, yes.
Small takeout.
Loud use, yeah.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this?
I have a question.
Yes.
In terms of the roof deck, is it going, I'm trying to understand, is it going to face directly onto Tremont Street?
It's, it's going to be set back, I believe it's going to, it's in the middle, but I'll defer to the architect, so it'll be set back a number of feet.
As shown on during EA 1.5, it's set back from Tremont Street approximately 10 feet.
And then the issue around the parking?
Parking, yes, so we are in violation for the additional unit that we're proposing. We need to provide one parking space. There is no interior parking, so we are seeking relief for that one parking spot. For the restaurant, because we are in a restricted parking district, there's no requirement for any parking per seat in that area.
You recognize you're up against residential parking along that?
Yes, that parking lot, which is behind that, is being developed, there's, I believe there's 800 dorm from Northeastern University. There's 800 dorms, so we, that's why we believe this restaurant will be a perfect fit for, for the, for the community.
Because that, the developing building behind it, there is no parking for the residents there either, so I, I'm wondering if you go through process in terms of agreement with other parking facilities, such as Northeastern.
We, we have not, we have not reached out to any parking facilities to try to secure the parking spot for this residential district. We hope, we hope, being in the city and being close to, to public transportation, you know, we hope that we utilize more public transportation in the area.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Joshua McFadden, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this moment, we'd like to go on record in support of the project. We had an Butters meeting back in December, and we'd like to move forward. However, we do understand the concerns about traffic mitigation and parking in the area. That's right now, we're in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like a motion to approve with continued BPDA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you. Going to go back to an earlier case that was called, is Chestnut, is 2325 Chestnut Square here? Madam Chair, going to make a motion for denial without prejudice?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'm going to call the 1030. Are there any withdrawals or deferrals for 1030? Address, please.
8 Deedee's Lane.
I'm sorry, Ms. Maran.
8 Deedee's Lane for number three.
Is that microphone working?
Sorry, 8, 8 Deedee's Lane?
Deedee's Lane. For the record, calling BOA 778-326-8DEEDE'SLANE. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is George Maran, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston, on behalf of Tim Johnson, requesting a deferral on 8 Deedee's Lane. There was an onsite Butters meeting, thinking now is perhaps, there needs to be a, a design change to the building.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You have a date of May 22nd.
Thank you.
Are there any other, yep, other?
844-846 East Third Street.
Thank you, Councilor. For the record, calling BOA 768-730-844-846 East Third Street. Name and address for the record, please.
George Maran, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is only a client matter that is here for iPod only, however, there is a substantial amount of, of opposition to the project. What my client would like to do is defer and work with the Butters and other neighbors and try to arrive at a design scheme that is satisfactory to the neighborhood.
Motion to approve deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
It'll also be May 22nd.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 1030?
We're going to take a break until 11 o'clock. The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, February 27th, is back in session. Just a reminder, please make sure that your cellphones are off. In conformance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being livestreamed. If you have conversations, please take them outside of the room. The acoustics in here are very poor. And if you're here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, I just want to let you know that we take everybody's comments, the communities, the BRAs, the mayor's office, all under advisement. So if you're here, please give us new information, so that it'll help us make a decision, will help us make a decision. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first case, 1030, BOA 781-815-50CLAPSTREET. This is a change of use for an existing building to Medical Marijuana Treatment Center. Interior-only renovation for the new business, and there's no structural work. Violation is Article 65, Section 15. Medical Marijuana Treatment Center is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the Board, my name is Mike Ross. I'm an attorney with Prince Logal. I'm here with my client, NSAJO Holdings, led by the Chief Operating Officer, Aiden O'Donovan, to his right, co-counsel JD Barry, and to my left, our architect, Eric Robinson from Roadie Architects. We're here to present 50CLAPSTREET for a conditional use permit. 50CLAP is an existing 6,000-square-foot building, and our intent is to put a medical marijuana dispensary at the location. This matter was approved in a letter of non-opposition by the Boston City Council on December 13, 2017. The building itself will be open from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There are nine parking spaces on-site for use of patients. We are proud to have the support of the John McCormick Civic Association in Dorchester, as well as the New Market Business Association.
Counselor, Counselor, excuse me, can you please tell us again how this facility will work? Will it be open on weekends? I'm assuming your hours of operation are just Monday through Friday?
Monday through Sunday. They will be open through weekends as well, yes.
Okay, so what are the hours again?
And the hours are 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay. There's nine parking spots. I'm looking at the plan, can you tell us how this is going to work if I were a patient?
Yeah, absolutely. So you see probably the best page would probably be the 1, 2, 3, 4th page of this color plan here. And this is CLAPSTREET where patients will enter, many will drive, many will walk as well, and they will essentially drive right into the, one of these parking spaces, and they will enter the facility at the rear and walk into the building and at that front entryway, there'll be a salary board, so it'll be a secure entrance that you can only enter, it's a double set of doors. And in that salary board, there will be a security checkpoint, where the only people able to walk into this facility will be people who both have a medical marijuana license with the come up from Massachusetts, and a prescription, for lack of a better term, from their doctors, allowing them to take advantage of this program. Once they've been, and they also cannot be over a certain amount of, of having been there previously. Once they've been verified at that salary board entrance, they're then able to walk in and be, be met by our, our team. Aiden is happy to go further into that for you. I just, I want to know, when they leave, and we'll be working with the Boston Transportation Department, we will be working with them to create a left turn only. If you take a right turn there, it will bring you back to the neighborhood and back onto Boston Street, and probably more congestion than you want to feed into. So we're comfortable doing a left turn only. Right there, we're working with VTD to make that happen.
And is there going to be handicap parking, and will there, is this building handicapped accessible?
The building is handicapped accessible, it has to be handicapped accessible.
Yes.
Eric Robinson with Roadie Architects, yes, there'll be a handicap parking spot.
Okay.
Counselor, I do have one question. It has to do with the site plan before the building plan.
Yeah.
And it appears that the parking is not on the same line, is that in fact?
That's correct, that is correct. We have worked out a lease with our abutting neighbor, a long-term lease with our abutting neighbor, and we will be leasing, even though it's not a requirement of the zoning or of the license. We have worked out an agreement with that neighbor to lease that strip of land and to incorporate it visually into our site.
Okay, but there's no proposal to combine lots and therefore have the parking in perpetuity, because now what is the parking? The parking is?
Ancillary.
Ancillary, rather than?
Right, right, but, you know, because it's a pre-code structure, and I actually checked this out with Plans exam, Mr. Santana, because it's a pre-code structure, it doesn't actually trigger the zoning, but, so it's.
But it's a change of use, isn't it?
Um, yes.
Because it was never a commercial use before.
Well, it was a commercial use, yeah.
It was.
It was never, you know, it was a commercial, I think, garage.
Yeah, auto garage.
An auto garage, it was the previous use.
Yeah, but that's different than, you know.
It is a change of use, absolutely.
Yeah.
The additional parking is, since it's not required by zoning, is over and above, and I went back a second time on this, because I, I had the same question, and he was, you know, he's like, no, you don't need to do it.
Okay, but the second part of, the first part of the answer was long-term lease. What does long-term really mean?
It's a five-year, I think.
With renewal.
Yeah, with a renewal, five-year, it's the same as our.
Yeah, so it's, it would be the same with this existing lease, where it's a five-year with five-year renewals?
So it's co-termnest with the lease of the building?
That's right.
And what's the second floor being used for?
Permit.
What's the second floor being used for?
Oh, the second floor.
Offices.
Offices, that will not be where patients go, but it is where?
So it's, it's for the, the service that's being provided on the first floor?
Yes, corporate office and storage.
Okay.
Of the nine spaces, how many are therefore free for patients? If there's offices up above, and you have staff on the first floor, assuming?
Yeah, yeah, all of them. Yeah, all of them. The staff will not be allowed to park there. We're going to work out a shuttle service with the staff, as we've done in other locations. The operator, just a word about the operator, Aiden O'Donovan is originally from Massachusetts, originally from the greater Boston area, went to Colorado a while ago, learned this industry, became proficient, wound up running multiple dispensaries in Colorado, came back here. He's been permitted in Watertown, Pittsburgh. This is his third proposal. At each of these locations, he's worked out this kind of shuttle service with his employees, as well as subsidized T-passes and other type of kind of progressive transportation policies.
At the Milk Street location, you have security personnel there, is that the same, going to be the same here?
The proposal here, and I should probably add, there are a couple provisos that we're being, that we were suggesting, that we, for the Board's entertainment, based on the community's request. We've, actually, this is, actually, this, this is not one of those provisos, but it can be if the Board sees it fit, and that is, we're going to have 24-hour, seven, seven-day-a-week security on-site, not electric security, but human security on-site, and that will be a combination of our own personnel and Boston Police, police details, when available. The provisos that we, that we mentioned is, there are three, I think, in particular, that I just want to propose. First and foremost, this is a medical marijuana for you, but Aiden's agreed to not approach this community and this site until 2020, or until he's been operating for a year, so make no application for any other use or use change.
So no recreational?
Until such time as, as 2020, or one year of operation. He's agreed to never allow any kind of on-site consumption. You may have heard of, in the future, these cafes and these, he's agreed to never do that, never apply for that, and he's agreed to a minimum transaction price of 40... And he's agreed to a minimum transaction price of $40 per transaction. The theory behind that is that we're very close to Mass Ave. We've been working very closely with the New Market Square Business Association and McCormick. There was some concern that someone would, could walk in there and pool money and, you know, spend $10, $5 and buy marijuana. Someone who may have drug addiction, someone who may be suffering from some of the addiction issues that are prevalent in that area. And so the $40, it's almost like an anti-nip policy if you're a liquor store. It was to create, not create incentive for someone to just pop in and get a joint per se, but rather to, to make a concerted effort to come there and make a purchase of $40 or higher.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We are in support of the vote of the council to not oppose this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEagren, City Council, Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Gary Walker, Electrical Workers Local 103. I'd like to speak in strong support. I've watched this thing go through the process and they're a very extensive process. They've answered many questions over that course of time. And I'm very happy with the result. They were also committed to us very early on, to the members of the building trades, that we will work with this on the site and provide good jobs for our neighborhoods. Thank you.
The chair, members of the board, my operators representing the carpenters union would like to go and represent support of this project.
Thank you. So can you take off your hat? Thanks.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Grady Easton. I'm a Dorchester resident and as well as a McCormick member, and I'm in favor of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with BPDA design review.
Second.
And I'd like to put a proviso on that the parking is always to be co-termist with the lease of the property.
Can I add a proviso just to enforce what the council already spoke about? That if it's recreational, that they need to come back here. This is a, this is, this use is only to this petitioner. And so that I want to make sure that anything moving forward needs to come in front of us.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 787-244, 1410 Columbia Road. This is renovate public spaces on the first and third floor as well as 137 units of the 153. The violation is Article 27s, Section 5. This is in the South Boston iPod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Quilty in Miller. 28 State Street, Suite 802 here in Boston. With me, to my immediate right, is Noam Kleinman, who's a regional vice president of Achilles Real Estate Management. To my second right is Rich Rankin from CI Design. He's the architect on the project. To my furthest right is Mr. Mark Nguyen, who's the construction manager for Achilles. A little bit of background, as you look through the handout that we've put together on the project. Carson Towers is at 1410 Columbia Road. It is a 17-story, 153-unit waterfront apartment tower. It was built in 1973. It's about 45 years old. The property is under new ownership. The gentleman from Achilles here with me today purchased the building in December of 2016. And what, now that they've owned the property for about a year, a little over a year, they're proposing to update and renovate the building, reconfigure the public spaces in the building on the first and third floors, as well as renovate 137 of the 153 units and add an additional three-bedroom unit on the third floor as a result of that reconfiguration. Importantly, there will be no expansion of the building. Nothing's happening to make the building bigger, taller, wider, et cetera. And what the, what the proposal will allow them to do is engage in much-needed renovations to those interior common areas as well as a majority of the existing residential units in the building, providing a much-needed enhancement to a long-existing residential housing offering in the South Boston neighborhood. Finally, I will say that the only zoning relief required for the project is the South Boston iPod under Article 27s. Otherwise, the project is completely zoning compliant. We did hold in a butters meeting on January 6th, which was well-attended, and answered any questions that the community had at that time.
How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. As the proponent stated, we did hold in a butters meeting on this project and answered many questions. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore from City Councilor Ed Flynn's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, once again Gary Walker, Electrical Workers Local 103, to speak in strong support also. Thank you.
And the chair, members of the board, my operators representing the carpenters union would like to go on record in support of this project.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 786-275-53G Street. This is interior renovation to include new kitchen, new exterior doors, and construct a new rear deck. Violation to Article 68, Section 8. Side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Going in, 53G Street.
So tell us what's being proposed.
We're proposing a 12-foot by 22-foot-six pressure-treated deck up the back of the house. And we're looking for relief for the side yard setbacks.
So is this a rear deck or a roof deck?
Rear deck.
It's a rear deck? Did you at some point propose a? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate. It's a rather modest project.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore from City Councilor Ed Flynn's office. We would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BPDA design. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 774-880-123G Street. This is construction of 196 square feet, a roof deck, an installation of structural steel beams with steel tubes in place, four-by-four posts to be installed with a six-inch carriage bolt. Deck frame is to be constructed from two-by-12 pressure-treated lumber, an installation of Simpson-Joyce hangers. The violation is Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions, and Article 68, Section 8, the side yard setback isn't insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this, my name is Mark Benaka at 123G Street in Boston.
Tell us what's being proposed.
We are proposing to add 196-square-foot roof deck to our property. We have engaged reputable architect and a reputable contractor that does a lot of work in South Boston, and we've worked very hard to make it conform to what's typical in the community, to make it look nice and to invest in our home. We've had in a butters meeting where we had?
Excuse me, are you part of this? Are you the contractor?
Yes.
You are, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, go ahead.
We had in a butters meeting in December. There were no issues raised, and we've brought several letters of support from our neighbors who, with no, no issues with dissent. The first issue, Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restriction is a height restriction, and that had to do with a deficiency in the original plan submitted. We have, on your second page of your packet, in the cloud there, you can see that this is within the one foot within the zoning regulations. So this actually conforms. It just wasn't expressly stated in the original design. The second is Article 68, Section 8, the side yard insufficient. We believe what's proposed is very consistent with what exists in the neighborhood. And I've shown several photos of roof decks in the area, including our own lower roof deck in our house with the common wall where they go right up into the party wall. And so we believe this conforms to what's standard for the neighborhood.
What's the access to the roof deck?
It'll be an exterior spiral staircase.
How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
I'm sorry?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We have received letters of support for this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore, City Councilor Ed Flynn's office. We would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 774-887, Ford Jason Terrace. This is a kitchen roof deck install of 393 square feet with spiral staircase, sliding door window install, and removing of the existing deck gourds in back deck location. An installation of a three, three 10-foot concrete footings, structural steel beams with steel tubes in place for a roof deck. Violation to Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions. Article 68, Section 8, side yard setback is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Nico Mendoza for Jason Terrace, South Boston.
And Jeff Swain for Jason Terrace, South Boston. And we have our contractor, from Capitol District.
Tell us briefly what you're proposing.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We are here today to propose a 285-square-foot roof deck as well as a 108-square-foot rear deck with access to the roof by a spiral staircase. We are the owners and residents of Ford Jason Terrace, where we've been for four years. And we're looking to add usable outdoor space to our home to enhance our quality of life and also continue to invest in our home and our neighborhood. We believe that our quest for relief is a modest one, and our plan respects and conforms with the existing character of the neighborhood. We, in collaboration with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we held in a butters meeting on December 16th. We continue to engage our neighbors and butters throughout those months since then. We have submitted several letters of support, which you have in your packet as well. And to our knowledge, we have not heard any opposition.
Access to the roof deck again is by spiral stair?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah?
And just to address the violations, similar to the last case of 123G Street, the first violation is Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions. The issue there was, again, that proper documentation was missing from the initial submission. It has since been updated at 1010, and we've included drawing A102, corrects that and provides that additional detail. So we do meet those guidelines.
How are the? Go ahead.
I was going to move to the next one. I'm sorry to make a question.
Sure, go ahead.
The second, the second is Article 68, Section 8, side yard insufficient. Again, it's pretty standard with the violations that you find in our neighborhood. We actually have the proper setback on the right-hand side of the building, but the left side is a party wall. And so, you know, we're seeking to, you know, get relief on that. For the record, we do have, within your packet, written support from the neighbors that we share that party wall with. And then finally, number three, it's, again, it's similar, you know, and pretty standard for our neighborhood, rear yard insufficient. I just want to call out that the existing, the existing easement within the yard is less than 20 feet as it is. It's 19 feet. So we're just seeking some additional, you know, footage there for the rear deck on. So again, it's pretty in line with the neighborhood.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We did hold in a butters meeting, and we also have received a packet of support letters from the proponent. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Ronald Claude from Counselor Ayana Pressi's office, and we'd like to go on the record as supporting.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Steve Moore, City Councilor Ed Flynn's office. We would like to go on record as supporting.
Good morning, Chairman. Karen Foley, Counselor Savi George's office, and we are also supporting this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 779-3357, 29 to 31 Ward Street. It's also a companion case of building code, BOA 779-358-2931 Ward Street. This is a direct, new five, four-story, nine-residential building with 12 parking spaces at grade and roof deck. Building is to contain three one-bedroom units and six two-bedroom units within a $10,451 square feet. The existing structure is to be razed. Violation to Article 68, Section 27s, dash 5, the iPod applicability. This is for building code, Section 780 CMR 1009.13.1, roof access, where a stairway is provided to a roof. Access to the roof shall be provided through a penthouse, complying with Section 1509.2. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning again, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Quilty in Miller. 28 State Street, Suite 802 here in Boston. With me, to my immediate right, is David O'Sullivan from O'Sullivan Architects. He's the architect on the project. To my far right is Ed Doherty, who is the developer from 29-dash-31 Ward Street LLC. We're providing to you some plans as well as a memorandum from this office, which will have what I'm about to say in it, but in writing for you all as well. A little bit of background, the property is located near the corner of Ward and Prebble Street, just outside of Andrews Square. It's about a quarter mile or so from the MBTA station there. And our proposal is to demolish an existing building on the property, construct a new four-story, nine-unit multifamily residential building, on-site parking for 12 at-grade spaces. And as Mr. Secretary mentioned, it is three one-bedroom units and six two-bedroom units. We are proposing a private roof deck on the top of about 320 square feet. It is private to that, to one of the top-floor units only. It is not a common roof deck. And the lot is about 5,760 square feet. It currently has a two-story, two-family building on it of about 1,860 square feet. The only zoning relief that the project requires is for an iPod permit. It has been designed in a way so as to comply with all the applicable dimensional parking, use, and other requirements of the zoning code. And we've passed out a memorandum from my office stating how, in fact, the project does comply with the iPod and the requirements of the iPod.
Nick, as is our usual procedure here, please speak to the building code violation.
Sure, I'll let Mr. O'Sullivan handle that.
David O'Sullivan from O'Sullivan Architects. Basically, we had proposed a roof hatch on the building to get up to the roof deck in lieu of a penthouse. Penthouse would have created a zoning violation for height. And the hatch is centered over the stair and provides access up to the roof deck.
Okay. And?
Let me address that. It is the position of this board that for new buildings, they are to be co-compliant, and especially when it comes to 1509. We have made exceptions in areas of historic designation in the South End. But in the South End, we're rarely dealing with new buildings. So the position of the board is to deny the building code.
May I have a motion, please?
Second of the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now to the merits of the case. Just can you explain how the traffic pattern on this? How is this, is, how is it going to work?
For the parking?
Yeah.
So the, there's an existing right-of-way that's shared with our neighbor. We're widening it out to 10 feet, so you come in along the right-of-way and pull into the first few spaces, pull through under the building to the spaces that are back farther on the site.
So does this mean, is this shared parking, or is it going to be?
All for this building.
It's going to be, okay, and how about the access? Is that going to be deeded, or how is that going to work?
There is a, there is a, basically a deeded right-of-way that's for the benefit of both lots. It's existing, it's pre-existing, it's been there, used as a driveway in the present condition now.
Okay. And this is an elevator building?
Yes.
Okay, so all units are accessible?
Correct.
Yes.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Councilor at large, Michael Flaherty. Council like to go on record in support. However, the IPod furthers the community process for a project such as this. It's intended to stop the overdevelopment of certain areas of the neighborhood. A product of this scope may not be deemed fit for a different pocket of the neighborhood. However, council believes that this project is a fit within the transforming Andrews Square neighborhood. We've heard from neighbors about their concerns about the roof decks, and therefore cannot support the roof decks themselves at this particular point, but will go on record and support the project aside from those roof decks.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in opposition. We have received a letter of opposition, as I believe the board has, from the Andrews Square Civic Association. There is a lot of concern about, primarily about the decks from the abutters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore from City Councilor Ed Flynn's office, we would also like to go on record as against. We too have received letters against the project concerning the deck from the Andrews Square Neighborhood Association and other associations. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor Asabi George's office, we echo John Allison and Councilor Flynn's sentiments, and we also oppose this project. Thank you.
If I can, yeah, so as stated in the initial discussion of the, you know, summary of the project, the roof deck is 300, the roof deck is 320 square feet on the top level. It is a private roof deck for only one of the units on the third floor, on the top floor, excuse me. It's not a common roof deck. So, you know, we need, you know, in order to be zoning compliant, that open space is calculated, to be included in that calculation. So the deck is needed to reach our open space calculation. We're happy to continue to work with the community and with the VPDA through design review. We've also, you know, we've heard those concerns. We have made changes to the building, other than the roof deck, including pulling the building back, adding screening and buffering to the front, and other amenities to the building. We also did agree to provide screening on both sides of this roof deck, on both the horizontal, both sides of the roof deck, not the front and the back, but the signs, to help with any noise mitigation, visibility issues, and things like that. The roof deck is in the, in the back of the building, and it's, it's in a spot where we hope that it's, you know, not going to be seen from, it will not be seen from the street. And the fact that, you know, we're proposing to add screening and buffering to it as well, you know, we're kind of caught here between trying to be a zoning compliant project by providing this open space in a way that will not cause issues with the community, and this is how we were able to do that.
We've also looked at numbers we can during design review. We have some flexibility in open space, so we could reduce the size of it. We basically placed it about 40 feet from the back property line, and about 80 feet from the front property line, and equidistant about 10 feet on either side from the edge of the building. So it's centered in the building, trying to make sure that it's not something that's visible and becomes a nuisance.
So it sounds like you're, you are willing to do some more, to work, to work with the community, to come up with something that, that, that works for everybody?
Absolutely. We've had a constructive dialogue with Andrews Square and all the elected officials. It's been, it's been a good process. We've had, got, obtained a lot of feedback, and we've tried to respond to that as, as we possibly could. I do think there is an opportunity here for us to make that roof deck smaller and still be compliant with the open space, to get it within one foot above the open space compliant requirement. Again, the hope here was to have a, with the new Article 68 and the IPod, to have a completely compliant project, to not come to you with any zoning variances, and this was how we were able to do that.
Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question about the parking? I'm just looking at the compact spaces versus the other spaces. Could you explain?
Sure.
We have a couple of compact spaces that are seven and a half feet by 18, which fits in with the zoning allowance for compact.
But aren't they all compact? Because they're all 18, and a full space is eight foot six by 20.
We, we actually have, 18 is to the, to the edge of the curb, and we have the three and a half feet on the end of the thing to overhang the building to 20 feet, overhang beyond the edge of the building 20 feet for all the links.
So we have the ability to make it?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us a more time? Could you work with the neighborhood to try to modify some of this, to get some, because it doesn't seem like you have any support here?
Well, again, the idea was to come with a compliant case. I think there's an opportunity to work with the community and come back with a non-compliant case with zoning, and that may require a variance from open space or a variance from parking. Of course, we'd be willing to do that always, but I think if that was the case, we would be coming back with variances to the zoning code, which is what we were hoping to avoid with this, you know, proposal.
Right, if we take Mr. Sullivan's, O'Sullivan's advice, by us denying the building code requirement for height, you're automatically having to go out. But I'm not sure that the height of a stair penthouse actually will get you into trouble for height.
I can verify that, but I've run into that problem before, I just need to stop.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for a referral.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
May I?
Okay, we'll see you then.
Can I ask at what time?
Eleven thirty.
Okay. I figured, but just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 782-775, 28F Street. This is to raise a rear shed, add a roof deck, and create a new two-story addition in the rear, and renovate the existing interior. Violation is Article 27S, Section 5, is in the South Boston IPod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stefanov, 93F Street, South Boston. Thank you all for seeing me today. I come before you with a fairly simple project, proposed renovation of a single-family rowhouse on the lower F Street. It's greater than 1,000 square feet, therefore IPod applicability. The owner would like to renovate and move in as the new homeowner, and make some additions, renovations, add a little space to the back, and put on a roof deck.
Please, so tell us exactly what's being said. It looks like there's a two-story rear addition?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, the building is an empty shell. He'd like to put on a two-story addition on the back to extend both the living space on the first floor, some mechanical space in the basement, create a little basement form for pure mechanical, and then extension on the bedrooms on the second floor.
It looks, how many square feet is the total addition?
One second, please. Total square footage is 1,171 square feet.
Can you tell us about that roof deck?
From the second floor, with a set of stairs to a roof hatch, would be a private roof deck for the owner, situated in the center of the roof.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support. We did hold an abutters meeting on this project. The primary concerns were the construction management, since this is in a row of rowhouses. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore, City Councilor Ed Flynn's office, we'd like to go on record as support. However, we'll note, there were some community concerns regarding construction management of the roof deck.
Excuse me, can you speak up just a little bit about the concerns?
We had received some concerns about the addition of the roof deck.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in oppo, is, are you speaking in opposition? Okay, please, name and address for the record.
My name's Rob McGovern, 30F Street.
Okay, tell us what your opposition is based on?
I base my opposition on the fact that there's skylights directly to the right, four feet away from the proposed roof deck. There's no proposal for a fence or anything, just the railing system that's going to be put on the deck. Secondly, the, during demolition, the petition wall between 30F Street and 28 was compromised, and 30F Street was full with dust. And I spoke with the building department back in September, and the contractor was supposed to get back in touch with us about repointing that wall. Never happened. I spoke with the architect after hearing, the original town hearing. We brought that up to them also, never called back. I also, I'm a general contractor, and I feel that in the drawings, it states that the exterior walls are too high for fire rated. I believe that that petition wall should also be too high for fire rated, because all it is one real brick.
Hold on, hold on, let me backtrack. What is your concern about the skylight and the roof deck?
Because of the position of the roof deck, it's 10 by 16, and there's only four feet between the edge of the deck and the skylights that are above the bedroom, the bathroom, the guest bedroom, directly to the right of where the deck is.
So that's on this property, not on your property?
This is the, that's, no, the, yeah, my property's 30F Street, we're directly next to it.
This, this roof deck will be affecting the skylights of this proposed property?
Right, because they'll be able to stand on the deck and look down inside.
And look into their own building.
Right, they'll be able to stand on, and be able to look right down into the skylights, into my bedroom and bathroom and...
Okay.
And I also questioned the, the access to the roof. They call it a day stair tread or day ladder.
Thank you. Thank you. So you've heard the concern?
Yeah, we have offered to provide screening for the roof deck, which I've done in other cases.
Do the plans, do the plans show that?
No, but we could make that a proviso.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
There's, there've been, you know, people are concerned.
And how about the issue about, you know, damage, you know, potential damage?
Yeah, so the masonry, it is empty right now. The brick does need work in cases. We are just eager to get back to repoint and repair. We don't have a permit yet to do that. So that is the intent, to make sound and insulate.
Okay, excellent. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with proviso of the roof deck, including screening, to respect the privacy of the abutters.
And we will hold signature until we have it. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso.
Calling BOA 692-075, 37 Farragut Road. This is a demo of existing two-family, erect eight residential units. The violation is Article 29, Section 4. This is in the Green Belt Protection Overlay District applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maransy. I'm an attorney with the business address 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined at the table by my client, Ryan Hunt. Madam Chair, members, so this is a zoning compliant and building compliant project, building code compliant project. It calls for demolition of an existing two-family building on a lot of 6,300 square feet at 37 Farragut Road in South Boston, in the direction of a new four-story, eight-unit residential building. Again, there would be eight units. Of those eight units, four would be one-bedroom units, three would be two-bedroom units, and one would be a three-bedroom unit. The smallest one-bedroom units are 881 and 883 square feet. The two-bedroom units range from about 1,000 square feet to 1,100 or 1,200 square feet, to the largest two-bedroom unit, which is 1,524 square feet. And then finally, on the setback fourth floor of the building, would be a 1,700-square-foot three-bedroom unit. As I mentioned, the project is zoning compliant. It is just within Green Belt Protection Overlay District. About 20% of the front portion of the site is captured by the most westerly edge of the 500-foot GPOD limit from the center point of Day Boulevard. The building does not front or touch in any way, actually, Day Boulevard, which is the Green Belt roadway. This is here as a GPOD matter, and I point out for the record, and as I believe that is the board knows, Massachusetts Superior Court and Appeals Court has held in the cases of KCI Management versus Board of Appeal, Mulligan versus Board of Appeal, Cedarwood Development versus Board of Appeal, that in matters of GPOD review of a zoning compliant project, the Board of Appeal may only impose reasonable terms and conditions in conjunction with approving the use, and it does not have discretionary authority to deny a GPOD permit. We believe that...
Mr. Maransy, tell me about how this parking is going to work?
Parking is accessed, there is an existing curb cut on the site. The parking is accessed by a curb cut on the left side of the building. As one looks at the building, Sheet A100 shows the basement parking plan with the driveway down. There are then six spaces arranged against the rear wall of the building. There's adequate maneuverability room in the middle, and then there are four compact spaces located towards the front portion of the building, immediately to the rear of the trash and recycle storage area.
And is there a roof deck proposed on this?
There's, there are front balconies. If, if, if the board members look at Sheet AB2, the schematic design, you can in fact see the front balconies, and at the third floor level, above the front-facing third-floor roof portion, there is a, there are balconies there. If you go to Sheet, Sheets, Sheet A101, you'll see that there's a balcony or a porch in the front on the second floor level, and on the third floor level, there are balconies in the rear on both levels.
And that's for the open space requirement?
That, in addition to a truly green landscaped open space, which is shown on Sheet A100, there's 1,843 square feet of a landscaped open space in the 20-foot rear yard setback, as well as on the, the rearmost portion of the two three-foot side yard setbacks. There is also, on Sheet A102, on the fourth floor level, is also a front terrace, roof terrace, because the building is set back at that level, and also on the rear adjacent to the master bedroom of the three-bedroom unit.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in opposition. We have held a couple of abutters meetings on this project, and abutters are very upset with the density and the size of the building. Thank you.
But it's, it's an as-of right. It meets the zoning requirement?
Yes. It is, I mean, it was filed before the IPod went into effect, so it's, it's only subject to GPOD.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore, City Councilor Ed Flynn's office, we would also like to go on record against this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Councilor at large, Michael Flaherty. Council stands with the neighbors in opposition.
And Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor Asabi George's office, we stand with the neighbors also in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Around the corner, 836 East Third Street. I also am opposed to it. Eight units, there's a two-family there now. He's next to a three-family. In my neighborhood, which is Third Street, we have 12 singles, five two-families, and six three-families. He's bringing like a mini hotel to us. We don't need it. It's two, we have four projects coming to that one block. The one was deferred earlier today, 844 East Third. He wants seven units. That's to my right. To my left, there's another one, four units, and he has another, he has another project And he has another, he has another project on P Street with another eight units. So I'm definitely opposed to it. Thank you.
Hi, Anne McDonough, 54 P Street. I've lived in this two-block area my whole life, and this development of taking away single-family and two-family homes to make apartment condos is just killing us. Yes, they provide one-point, whatever it is, parking, but there's always more than one car for these condos. It's a quality of life. All these buildings go up high and take our light, our air away from us. Most of these people in this room have lived there all of our lives. We want to stay there and finish our lives. All these new people coming into one-bedroom condos, there's no families. We want singles, we want to leave the singles and the two-families, please.
I have a proposal, 846 Third Street. Again, I oppose the overdevelopment of the area. The house behind me, when it was being in the factory, now 20 units. Now there are going to be eight, and another one, eight either side of us. It's just being overdeveloped, and there's no parking as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maransy?
Again, I don't know--
Oh, hold on, one minute.
Sorry, one more, sorry. Patricia O'Keefe, 841 East Third Street. I oppose, oppose this project. When we had the first abutters meeting, the original proposal was for eight units, was everybody was in opposition. But there was a second abutters meeting, which they proposed a six unit. Now they're going back to the original eight. I'm in opposition to whether it's a six or an eight-unit building. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm a third generation to own my house at 841 East Third Street.
My name is Mary Balger, and I have lived at 828 East Third Street for well over 40 years. And all of a sudden, our neighborhood is disappearing. This is not necessary, and I wish you would act to help us keep things the way they are. I know you have to have change, and we understand when change is good. To me, this change is unnecessary, and it doesn't help anyone. Thank you.
Mr. Maransy?
Again, Madam Chair, it's a zoning compliant matter. Unlike the 844, 846 Third Street case, which was deferred, this is not subject to IPod. This is GPOD compliance only. I don't want to sound like the proverbial broken record. I think the board is, is, is well aware of the limits to its discretionary authority to deny GPOD matters. Rather, the courts have clearly held that the board may only impose reasonable site plan conditions. This is the subject of a court remand that was originally scheduled for noon today that I understand we're postponing. But the fact of the matter is, postponement, I think, is the operative word here. I mean, ultimately, this permit is going to issue.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second is up to you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
Motion does not carry, so it's been denied.
Calling, calling that case, calling BOA 754-380-55 to 57 Brimmer Street. There's also a companion case, BOA 754-388-63 to 69 Brimmer Street. This is 55 to 57 Brimmer. Alterations of an existing two-story, single-family residence in use as an elementary school include reconstruction of a rear one-story structure, accessibility improvements, and adding a second means of regress in interior modifications. Violation is Article 8, Section 7. Elementary school is a conditional use. Article 32, Section 9, G card enforcement. This is for 63 to 69 Brimmer Street. This is to add a three-story addition to an exterior courtyard above a second-floor roof and develop the remaining courtyard space for outdoor use. Extends existing elementary school use and requires a variance. The violation is Article 15, Section 1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 9, Section 9-1, extension and reconstruction of non-conforming used building. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road, Braintree. With me this afternoon is Don Mills from Mills Whittaker Architecture, and also Tracy Bradley, who is the headmaster of the Park Street School.
Can you tell us what's being proposed?
Sure. I'm going to start with 6369 Brimmer Street. This is the existing school building. The proposal is to add a three-story addition of 952 square feet. The zoning in this neighborhood is H265. As Mr. Fortune stated, the variances are FAR. Zoning in this neighborhood is two. The current FAR of this building is 3.54, and the proposal before you is increase the FAR by .14, so the proposal will be 3.68. The other violation, as Mr. Fortune pointed out, is that elementary school is a conditional use, so it's an extension of a non-conforming use, and we're looking to use the outdoor, the courtyard as outdoor space for the school. We have had several neighborhood meetings, abutter meetings, as well as a meeting before the Beacon Hill Civic Association. The Beacon Hill Civic Association provided the board with a letter of support, or not of opposition. Additionally, I have, I have provided the board this afternoon more than 60 letters of support, including support from all abutters with the exception of one.
So let me ask you, will this be increasing the number of students in the building?
It will not. This, the, the proposal before you, just by way of history, this building has been a school for over 100 years. Initially, it was the Brimmer School, and then Brimmer and May merged. It was a Brimmer and May School. Then it became Burdette College, and then it became Emerson College. And the folks bought this 15 years ago and turned it into an elementary school. So the proposals before you, this addition, as well as the conversion of a single-family house to school use, is only to provide more facilities for the current students. We have a good neighbors agreement with the Beacon Hill Civic Association, that the, the amount of children will not increase. Right now, the limit is 235 children with 35 staff members.
Okay, question?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Christian Simonelli, Groundwater Trust, and we do have the approval letter from Bosworth Water and Sewer.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
We also have the letter, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Jussel Gora, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Service. At this time, we would like to go on the record in support. They did have a very favorable abutters meeting with, a lot of the residents came out showing their support, even the questions that were asked. One of them, you've asked yourself, it was in regards to the enrollment, if that is going to be increasing. They've come on the record and said that it's not. They have displayed a great sense of partnership and community efforts on their behalf with the community. So everyone's very excited about this happening. We do have one abutter who's made it known that it is in complete opposition to the project. Their lawyers are, at the moment, trying to work out a favorable agreement, but as it stands, he's the only one in opposition. Everyone else is in support, so, thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Kate Bell from City Councilor Josh Sakum's office. We would also like to go on record in support.
My name is Paul Millbury. I live at 21 Beaver Place, just around the corner from the Park Street School. We are totally supportive of what seems like a fairly minor increase in the FAR ratio to 3.68. Park Street School has been a wonderful neighbor to us since moving into the neighborhood more than a decade ago. As abutters, before they moved in, we were asked what was important to us. We asked for certain concessions around traffic flow and parking. They agreed, and they've been compliant since, since the day one. So we're very supportive.
Thank you.
I'm Margaret Scott. I'm a direct abutter on Beaver Place, and I also have a letter from another abutter who is directly in back of this property, the one that opposes it. And we both sent letters to the board, and we are totally in support of the Park Street School's endeavor here. They have been incredibly good neighbors, always respectful of parking and of the noise in the street, which is nonexistent. They are great neighbors, and we totally support this project.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, once again, Gary Walker, Local Record Local 103. The Park Street School has been supportive of us in the past, using our contractors on some of their past projects. We'd like to return the favor and support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, my name is Edward Hirschfield. I'm an attorney with Greenberg Chor, One International Place, and I represent David Trust, who's the trustee of DAT Realty Trust, and he is the owner of the property at 7 Beaver Place, which directly abuts the school and--
So can you briefly, briefly tell us what your opposition is based on?
Our opposition is based on two aspects of the plan only. We are, I want to make it clear, we are not opposed to the part of the project at 5557 Brimmer Street.
Okay. So this is, this is in reference to 63 to 69?
6369, which is, which is, as, as Mr. Pulginie expressed, an expansion of 15 feet into an existing courtyard, if you will. My client's property, the rear of his property currently looks out into that courtyard. This, the, the expansion would bring, as you look at from the rear of his property, the nearest wall of the school to the right is 15 feet away. This expansion would bring the wall immediately adjacent to his property with windows in the wall, from which you could see from the school into the windows, which will be his bedroom in the back of his property. And, and also, the school is intending, as it's been expressed to us, to use the courtyard, to use the courtyard. While previously, in 2003, when the school received prior zoning relief, the school agreed that all of its activities would occur indoors. So we're opposed to this for the two reasons of the increase in the FAR and the increase, and the use of the courtyard. In 2003, the school did obtain relief from FAR to go to add, to do an addition at that time, but at that point, the addition was for accessibility, safety purposes, and also did not change the envelope of the building at all. Because it's a further increase of an FAR, which is 2.0 to 3.68, which is a substantial increase above what's, what's allowed, we are in opposition to, to, to the proposal.
Thank you. Pulginie?
I'm sure, I'll address that. As I stated from the beginning, this is, we did everything I could possibly think of to reach an agreement with this abutter. I have never ran into a situation like this. The person who's opposed, and Attorney Hirschfield's client, addresses him as the neighbor. He has never moved into this building. This building that he owns, if you guys have it on your computers, is a hole in the ground. He knocked the building down. So he bought a building, he knocked it down. He is, now has windows, which are illegal windows, on the wall into our facility. We reached, we tried, we did everything we could. We said, we'll give you a five-foot--
If he knocked it down, how were the windows?
He knocked everything down except for one wall. So it's a wall that has to, would have to be moved back almost four feet. And we reached out to him and said, you know, you're going to have to go before the zoning Board of Appeal, just as we are. Let's sit down and try to work this out. We offered a buffing, a buffering, some sort of plantings, a fence, something to allow him privacy, because that's what he stated. It was no use of the courtyard, no use of the courtyard. We even, even as, as recently as Saturday afternoon, Ed Hirschfield and myself were emailing back--
So, let me just backtrack.
Sure.
No use of the courtyard, et cetera, and there's just a single wall that exists for this property?
I believe there's a--
Yeah?
Yes.
Oh.
And also, can I just address the one thing that he brought up? In the decision that the board wrote back in 2003, it said that the school, the activities will be kept inside, and the activities have been kept inside. What this is, is quiet enjoyment. We're not talking about going outside and playing basketball or playing dodgeball. This is, a teacher wants to go out, have a cup of coffee and lunch outside, or if a teacher wants to go out and read a book to the young children. That's what it is. That's not activities. The whole thing was to keep loud, loud activities or athletics inside the school.
So that's passive, passive kind of activity?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review. Do you need it?
This is for the historic district, right?
We can help, right?
Beacon Hill, yeah.
I apologize, we don't need that then.
So it's a motion for approval?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Before I call the next case for 10:30, I'm going to call the 11:30s. Are there any withdrawals or deferrals for 11:30? Address, please.
173 Humboldt Avenue, Dorchester, Roxbury.
Okay, just give me two seconds here, I'm going to call it in for the record. Calling BOA 617-813-173-HUMBULDA. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Elizabeth Keely, representing the Boston Rescue Mission. They're located at 29 Kingston Street, Boston, Mass.
You're requesting a deferral?
Yes, we are.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We are at May, May 22nd.
Thank you very much.
Okay, see you then at 11:30.
Address, please.
9 Chelsea Street.
For the record, calling BOA 698-906-9 Chelsea Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Laurence Cutino from Richard Lins's office, 9 Chelsea Street. Our address is 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, Massachusetts. Are you requesting? We're requesting a deferral on this matter. The Article 80 process is still ongoing.
And we do anticipate that being done?
We have requested input in writing that we're asking for the deferral date anytime after April 17.
Okay, may I have a motion for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Sir, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
May 8th.
Thank you.
Any other requests for deferrals or withdrawals?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Sir, did you have your hand up earlier? Are you deferring? Are you moving forward?
They're moving forward.
Okay.
Hold a second.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the next case, calling BOA 754-021-13 Conker Square. This, within a private garden and a short retaining wall in backfield to create two parking spaces. Violation is Article 64, Section 9, usable open spaces insufficient. Article 64, Section 36, off-street parking design, the size, the access drive, and maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Hani Hassan. I'm a physician working currently in New York.
Could you speak up a little bit, because really the acoustics was very hard to hear?
So my name is Hani Hassan. I'm a physician working currently at Memorial Snow Catching in New York, but I have lived in, you want my address, 204 West 137th Street in New York. I'm also the owner of unit number one, where I live at 13 Conker Square in Boston, where I lived for, between 1918 to 2002. I have kept the unit since then with plans to maybe come back to Boston. My brother is the owner of unit number one downstairs. And we have applied to create a two-parking spot in the backyard of the property, like everyone in, in the neighborhood, absolutely everyone. As you know, the application has been resumed on the two, two points that you have cited, which pertain to the usable dimensional space is insufficient, and the size, access, drive, and maneuverability. So to first address these two issues, I would like to point out the following facts. All the 49 townhouses that are bordering the back alley have each two parking spots, with the exception of our building and one other neighborhood, without, without exception. That other neighbor has a garden. You can see on the exhibit number one, a picture of the Google map, and I'm sorry, we don't, we didn't distribute enough exhibits, but it shows that everybody has--
Can you, can you jump to your property and tell us which exhibit? I'm assuming this is under, is it three, Section 3? Under Exhibit 3, is that your property?
No, this is a, this is, was it to give you an example of other properties--
Where are your, where are, where is your property? Do you have a picture of your property in here?
No, we have plans of the property, Exhibit 4.
Okay.
So, as I was mentioning, all the 49 townhouses and all the buildings have the same, about the same dimension, and all the spaces are exactly the same. The access, space availability, and the maneuverability is the same for all the buildings on the street.
Okay, hold on one minute. Have you had, Bob, have you had a chance to look at this?
Madam Chair, Lady, Members of the Board, Bob D'Amico, Boston. I have reviewed the plans, and there's a lot of parking, just like he's requesting already, and it doesn't work. He backs off into alley 502.
Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. Clearly shows that the pattern can work.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody from the elected officials to speak in support? Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Joelle Maguire. I'm a neighbor, and everybody has a park, has two parking spaces as well as I do.
Okay.
So that's why I'm in favor.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held an onsite abutters meeting, and there was not a single person who attended that was in support of this proposal. There was a city light that was moved a couple months before this permit application that caused, that was moved towards another neighbor's parking space, which now causes a little bit of an impairment for them to back in and out of that. I've received over a dozen emails and letters in regards to this proposal, all in opposition. They're on the record with the board. We've asked the proponent to work with the neighbors to come to some type of compromise, either around the light and also the access to that rear. All of the alleyways in the south end are incredibly narrow. It really does require neighbors to work with one another in terms of accessing those spaces. At this time, we don't believe that there's sufficient neighborhood support around this proposal, and we would like either the proponent to defer, the board to defer this case, for them to work with their neighbors around this issue, or to deny it outright. Thank you.
Okay. So given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Go ahead.
I'm Joseph Rominelli. I live directly next door, 11 Concord Square, and that's where the light was moved to. And I brought pictures, they're in my email. I think all the other points we touched on, but if you look at the email, you can see there's a Google Maps from prior to moving it, and then a current photo where you see it's now on our property. And I think they had to use that in order to make the proposal work. So we're just saying, move it back and then submit your proposal how it was, because we rent that place knowing that we have that spot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. So you understand what the issue is?
I, I was prepared to discuss the issues, if you allow me to do it.
Well, the thing is, when we see a project here, we hope that these good neighbor conversations have occurred already, and that you have worked things out before you're here. So I think we need to defer this, and-
Will you allow me to, to defend the points?
May I? I just need a motion for deferral, please.
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
May 8th.
Okay, let's have the conversation before May 8th, and then we will dispose of this case then, okay? Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 725-224-37 Bowden Street. This is a change of occupancy to include wireless communication facility or to include add wireless communication equipment, construct two fiberglass enclosures, three foot by four foot by seven foot eight high, concealing two antennas, two remote radio heads and a junction box in each of the two proposed fiberglass concealing boxes, and one GPS antenna on a steel frame for two equipment boxes, and a PPC automatic switch and gas generator mounted there on the cable trays connecting to the same power in the telco in the basement. The violation is Article 86, Section 6. Any antenna in any residential district is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. I have a business address of 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass, 02109. With me is Michael Fox, SAI and Horizon. Madam Chair, we are here today seeking relief to change the occupancy of the building to include wireless communications equipment on the roof of the property. The zoning sub-district is H265, and in that district, the violation is a rooftop antenna is a conditional use, so we're seeking a conditional use permit. The rooftop equipment consists of fiberglass enclosures, antenna, radio heads and GPS antenna. Without going any further, I'll turn it over to Michael Fox, who can walk you through the photo sims and the site plan that you have before you.
So the site plan, what we're looking to do is, there's already two existing stairwells that go up to the rooftop, and we're looking to extend those existing stairwells with match. Up there is currently gray material, we're going to put up a gray fiberglass material that will house two antennas. Those will be four by three by seven. Like I said, there'll be two of those. Additionally, there'll be a steel frame that's eight feet, eight and a half feet by 15 feet, and on that will be two outdoor cabinets for our equipment and a generator. And as for the photo sims-
Back up for a minute.
Yes?
Can you find any building that's taller with one of these?
So for the service, for our needs, we need to be as low as possible. We're looking to cover that short amount of section on Bowden Street. There's a real capacity issue there, where people are just unable to use their phones. The taller buildings would not work because they broadcast our signal too far. And during the site selection, I selected this building because it really has very minimal views from the street, as you can see. If you look at the photo sims here, on page three, it's the view from directly in front of the building, which you cannot see any of the install. Page four, it brings you up the street a little bit more, and that's when you can start to see the equipment. Currently up there is-
Okay, hold on one minute. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Does anybody-
Madam Chair, just for the record, with regard to community process, on, on October 12th, we had an abutters meeting sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, where abutters showed up, all in support. And on November the 8th, we appeared before the Beacon Hill Civic Association, who gave us a vote of non-opposition or support. So I'll just put that on the record as well.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, just saw, go to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to go on record and support. They have met with the Beacon Hill Civic Association, and they've gone on the record, they've submitted a letter of non-opposition. The only thing that they've asked is that we take into consideration not approving any more of these wireless antennas within the historical district, but other than that, they're in support. And at our abutters meeting, we only had maybe two or three residents come out, more just curious about what was going to be put in, but no opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to, to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
So the access to the equipment is to the existing staircase?
Correct, yes. The landlord has, through a lease agreement, the landlord has given us access to the building.
Okay, so the, so the, no, have you knew about the act?
No, no. Another thing I want to mention, that those two by four boxes that you can see on page four, those have actually been up there for over a year and a half, since April 1, 2016. And at the community meeting, the neighbors said they didn't even notice them.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, your own side. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. That's it. Calling BOA 791-476-91 to 99 Carsway Street. This is a build approximately 1,000 square feet of existing retail unit space on the first floor level. The space is proposed to be a coffee shop. Violation is Article 46, Section 9. Violation description is conditional takeout is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Rashi Monglik. I'm with Victor McCulte and Miller. With, what you're, what is about to be passed out are letters of support from the Downtown North Association, as well as some renderings of the proposed site. With me is Smith Ash Patel. He's looking to put in a coffee shop at the site and build out the existing retail space. It's been vacant for about a year, and so that increased business will bring some needed economy to the area.
Paulus, do you have experience with takeout in the city?
Experience with takeout? Yes.
Do you have another business in the city?
Yeah, I have a business next door, the liquor store.
The liquor store, but no, no experience with takeout?
Used to be, I have like the coffee store.
It used to be a coffee, so that you used to run?
Billy's too. As a feminine store with the coffee.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate. Can I ask a question? How long has this been vacant space? I think you mentioned-
Right, a little over a year, to my knowledge.
And what was there before?
A photo shop.
Photo shop. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record and support. The applicant does have the support of the Downtown North Association as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Will take our language.
BPDA design review for signage and typical takeout.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 784-142-283 to 285 Hanover Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family dwelling and takeout restaurant to a three-family dwelling and restaurant with seating number 37. Violation is Article 54, Section 12. Restaurant is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Dan Toscano from Drago and Toscano Law Offices located at 50 Broad Street, Boston, Mass. Here representing Mr. and Mrs. Polino. Mike Polino to my right, and Tom Polino is what, to my far right. They're the owners of the property located at 283 Hanover Street, which is located in the Hanover commercial, it's the community commercial sub-district. We are changing, seeking to change the use of this property from a takeout restaurant, takeout restaurant and three residential units to a restaurant with seating and the three residential units. As you can see on the first floor, it's just a, a site of the existing property, which is, you're looking at where it says Pinkberry. That's the building that Mr. and Mrs. Polino recently purchased, and they're looking to change. That was a yogurt shop, and there was a takeout only. We want to put a, a surprise, no surprise, an Italian restaurant there. So tell you a little bit about Mr. and Mrs. Polino. They've been in the restaurant business for 40 years. They've owned and operated restaurants outside the city of Boston. They're currently owner and operating Polino's Restaurant located in Prince Street in the north end of Boston around the corner. They recently purchased this property, and they want to operate another location. It's going to be, although we do have in the north end, a homemade pasta. This is going to be a unique, strictly only homemade pasta is going to be prepared onsite and sold at this restaurant, and nothing else. So only homemade pastas, and we're hoping that you would support the change. It's a 30-seat restaurant.
This is a restaurant?
This is a 30-seat restaurant, approximately 800 square feet of space. Downstairs, there's going to be destitute, plenty of storage downstairs, refrigeration prep area upstairs, your seating area, new handicap bathroom and kitchen area.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record and support. We held in an abutters meeting on-site on January 8th of this year. They also have the support of the North End Waterfront Residents Association and the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board engineers, council, the other individuals, the council wishes to be recorded and supported.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Just a quick question. I'm looking at the, the visual that you shared with us, and it looks like there's a step up to get into Pinkberry. Will that be taken care of?
We are considering moving the front door to the left and adding that ramp, so with, with, in discussions right now.
You're working it out.
So during BPDA design review, we're, we're in discussions whether we should move the front door to, to looking at, well, from looking at the building to the left, so we can provide a ramp. But as of right now, we're, we're still unsure.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with, with BPDA design review for the ramp?
Inside it.
Inside it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Calling the next case for redis- All right. So you took the- Calling the next case for rediscussions. Calling BOA 773-964-145 Cory Street. This is a chicken coop on an existing four-by-six shed. The violation is Article 56, Section 7. Accessory keeping of animals, chicken is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Darlene Dow. My address is 144 Cory Street.
Tell us why, what you're here for? Are you requesting a deferral or a withdrawal?
I've been working, trying to get my chicken coop, you know, get the table with my chicken coop. We're working with the neighbor about relocating. He's not happy with where it is. And I went to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council meeting.
You're requesting a deferral or withdrawal? Are you going ahead?
Yeah, I'm requesting a deferral. We're going to meet with us again in May.
Okay. May I have a mo-
Motion for, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
So you're meeting in May, ma'am?
Yes.
All right, so we'll give you a June 12th date.
Okay, we'll see, is, is there a-
11:30.
Oh, so we're all set. So we'll see you June 12th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 786-629-40 West Morland Street. This is a combined vacant lots with 40 West Morland for a total of 15,823 square feet. Direct a new 12-unit residential building with parking at ground level. Violation is Article 65, Section 8. A multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9. The lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9. The building height is excessive. Article 65, Section 9. The front yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9. The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranso, attorney, with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Revised plans have been presented to the board depicting a new nine-unit building, rather than the original 12-unit building. Therefore, obviously, no, no IDP component to this. I am aware of the recommendation of the Boston Planning and Development Agency, which was based on the nine-unit scheme. Since-
Mr. Maranso, does this change any of your violations?
It, it, it does not. Since the, this matter was deferred, my client went back to the community. He is at a point where he's confident that he has the support of virtually all the abutters.
Is this, is this Cardman Square? No, it's not.
No, this is West Morland Street. Cardman Square Neighborhood.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, for the record, I need to correct-
The applicant is Cardman, not Cardman Square.
No, yeah, it's not Codman Square in DC, which I put on the record when the matter was deferred. It was groot with those CDC cases. The petitioner for the record is Thomas Noto. Again, my client, since this matter was deferred, went back with a couple of redesigns. Most significantly, two units have, I'm sorry, three units have been eliminated. It's now a nine-unit project. And as late as just the past couple days, there were additional meetings whereby the continuous massing of the building had been objected to or was broken up so that it doesn't look like one continuous building, which is reflected on Sheet A two-point-one. This is a consolidation of three lots. Two of these lots are located at the Minutet Park address, which is the side of the building essentially that appears on the cover of the plan sheet. The existing two-family building, I believe it is, at forty, West Morland, obviously has a West Morland Street address. There is a right-of-way coming down West Morland, which provides access to the site. Vehicular access would be provided on the Minutet Park side, hence the location of the garage entrance is there. This was done so recently that it's admitted that the blank garage wall is an unattractive design aesthetic in terms of the project, which, were this matter to be approved, we would, of course, address with the Boston Planning and Development Agency in design review. With respect to the building itself, again, there are nine units. They are all two-bedroom units. They range in size from two units of ten thousand sixty-five square feet, two units at a maximum square footage of fourteen hundred and nineteen square feet, and the rest about twelve and thirteen hundred square feet. This is a two F six thousand zoning district, hence there is a zoning violation for a multifamily dwelling. Again, this is an almost sixteen thousand square foot lot once consolidated. The lot frontage insufficiency owes to the fact, as I understand it, that Minutet Park is not a public way. It's not a City of Boston street. It's a private way. There's a floor area ratio violation in this two F six thousand district. The maximum FAR is point four. This building would be at point, one point four-two, excuse me. Cited for a building height violation, that is stories only. On the Minutet Park side, this is a three-story building. On the West Morland Street side, it's a two-story building. The district has a maximum height limit of two and a half stories and thirty-five feet. This building rises no higher than thirty-four feet in maximum height. There's a front yard insufficiency. Front yard, again, is the West Morland Street side. Fifteen feet is required. The existing building has a setback of one point six feet. This building would have a six-foot front yard setback on West Morland. And finally, there is cited rear yard insufficiency. Thirty feet is required. Again, this is the Minutet Park side. Six point three feet is provided.
And how many parking spaces?
The parking spaces, there are eighteen, which is two per unit, one per bedroom.
Tell the plans, Mr. Bisani.
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. This is the second version of this proposal. The initial proposal had twelve units. It was not received well by the community. After a series of community meetings, the developer has brought it down to what you see before you and has gotten the support of the butters. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve. Jeff, only BPDA design review, right? Continued BPDA design review, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling next case. Calling BOA six eight three four five zero fifteen Wilson Street. This is to change occupancy from a three-family to a full four-family and renovate and install sprinklers and legalize the existing condition. The violation is Article sixty, Section forty. Lot street parking is insufficient. Parking is insufficient for additional unit. Article sixty, Section eight. The multifamily is a forbidden in the three F six thousand sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Cecil Dantle, one forty-six Cedar Street, Boston, Mass.
Mr. Hansel, we were sorry you were out sick the last time. So, you're here with this proposal to change occupancy from a three to a four family. How are the plans, Mr. Bisani?
Drawings are adequate. Unless they've changed, they haven't changed, have they?
No. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
With BRA design review?
BRA design. Or BP.
Whatever.
I'll second, second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA seven eight zero five two three twenty-eight Briar Road. This is to construct a new second-floor addition on an existing footprint of an existing single-family dwelling. The violation is Article fifty-six, Section eight. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-six, Section eight. The front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-six, Section eight. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Ivan Hernandez, twenty-eleven Baker Street, West Roxbury.
Yehoshon, owner of the twenty-eight Briar Road.
So, tell us what you're proposing.
We're proposing a second-story addition on an existing one-story Cape-style house. Putting three bedrooms on the second-floor laundry area. We're basically raising the existing roof, Gable-style roof, and maintaining the existing as-is.
Just for the record, this particular proposal was before the small committee, but it had been postponed today because the building is not owner-occupied. How are the plans, Mr. Bisani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Now, as I recall, the concern was that most of the buildings on Briar Road did not have a full story. Is that the case?
There are six or seven other houses on Briar Road that have a full second story. So, it's, actually, it's two houses over is a full second story, almost identical.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held two meetings about this proposal. It was lightly attended. Generally, no one had an issue. I do have two opposition letters with me, though. But for the most part, from the other neighbors, I've heard from on the street and the street directly behind, they didn't have an issue. And the Neighborhood Council voted in support of the proposal as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood. Michael Flaherty, Council of Neighborhood in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Officer.
Okay, please put your name and address on the record.
John Fitzgerald, fifteen Croppings Lane.
And what is your opposition based on?
Out of character with the neighborhood. It is, most of this, most of the houses on the street are a bundle of style small cake. It is, it has been vacant for about five years now. It is owner, it is not owner-occupied, and the proposal to build, we're not being a nippy about this, just simply, it's just too, too large and it's out of character of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
It is also too, there is a correction to this. It should be eight hundred and ninety-two square feet on the first floor. It says eighteen hundred on the proposal here, by the way.
Thank you. Is anybody else to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shannon Murphy from City Council in Mount O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
May I have a motion, please?
I want to make a motion for approval. I'm actually in agreement with the fellow who is in opposition. But I do think that something can be built here, and I'm going to recommend very aggressive BRA design review. And Jeff, the purpose is to get it contextually, and whatever has to be done, will be done. And it wants to fit within the neighborhood. This does not now, and rather than simply deny it, I think that working with the talented staff at BPDA, something to come up with. And you will have to agree with what they tell you to do.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Thank you.
Calling BOA seven 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 nine three seven sixty-two Darnell Avenue. This is adding a dormer to provide code-compliant access to an existing bonus room. Adding LVL beams to the first floor to open rooms. Adding a shed dormer over the basement, renovating the front and rear porters of the roof deck. The violation is Article sixty-seven, Section nine. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article sixty-seven, Section nine. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Charles Donovan, address two point two Rosendale Avenue, Rosendale.
So, why were you deferred the last time?
Non-owner occupied.
Non-owner occupied, okay. So, tell us what's being proposed.
So, I'm doing a remodel to a single-family. I'm adding a shed dormer over the, in the attic over the stairs, just because the existing stairs were, they were out of code, and the attic was pretty testing. So, in order to bring the stairs into compliance, we had to put a small shed dormer over the stairs.
And how many square feet is this proposed dormer?
It's six by six, thirty-six square feet.
And is this a one-family building?
It is.
Okay. And what's a bonus room?
It's the, it's the attic. It's the finished room that was previously in the attic.
And so, how are the plans, Mr. Bisani?
Drawings are adequate. The only issue last time was it was not owner-occupied.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Murphy, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Initially, I had reservations supporting this proposal because the work is complete. But after the community meeting, all the butters were in support, so it's not anything that's...
And it looks contextual? It looks like it was done well?
Yes. So, I mean, according to the neighborhood, there's nothing that's really outstanding as far as neighborhood concerns. But the only reservations to offer support was the fact that it had been completed already. But as far as the project is...
Was Jeff without a permit?
No.
Thought you had a permit.
I had a permit, it was a short form, and built Inspector Pango, Inspector Miller said, yeah, so it was finished. Only I pulled long form and built me a...
Thank you.
But we'd like to offer and go on the record of support. Thank you.
If anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA seven eight four eight six eight ten Newburg Street. This is an addition and alteration to an existing two-family dwelling. Add one dormer and extend an existing dormer. Demolish the rear porch and build an addition with full foundation to the rear of the building and extend living space of the basement to the first-floor unit. Violation is Article sixty-nine, Section nine. Side yard requirement is excessive. Article sixty-nine, Section nine. The height is excessive. Two and a half stories maximum allowed. And Article sixty-nine, Section nine. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Michael Ford, two oh four Church Street, West Roxbury.
Tell us what's being...
Sorry, Joseph Murray, sixty-eight Meadow Street, North Massachusetts.
Tell us what's being proposed.
We're proposing to keep the existing use as two residential units to be sold as condominiums, to extend the living space into the basement area for the first-floor unit, to replace an existing porch in the rear of the property for an addition for the first-floor unit that mirrors also the second-floor addition. A dormer for the third floor for additional living space. And the idea is to create larger units that would be suitable for families.
Now, I happen to live on Newburg Street, but at the other end, and it looks like the building has one meter. Has it been taxed as a two-family all these years?
Yeah, we actually went to the building department and went to the certificate box encounter, and they confirmed that it was a lead-up to family before we purchased the property. It's in our...
The buildings, the newly renovated one on this side of you is a single-family.
Correct.
And they're all the same size, so...
Well, the one to our direct left, as you're facing the property, is a two-family, and the one to our right is a single-family.
At the fire, yeah. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bisani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Murphy, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record of support. Held a community butters meeting, and everyone, it was well-received, and everyone was supportive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Mr. Bisani, I did forget to ask you, what was the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
The floor-to-ceiling height in the basement is not listed.
The existing, the existing height right now is seven feet, but that's from slab to the existing joist. So, our plan is to underpin the foundation and pour a new slab with a finished ceiling height of seven foot six.
Why?
I'm sorry?
Why?
So, so we can capture the living space?
No, it's only two families. Check the code. If it's, if you have enough height, why, why lower it? One and two families allow seven foot.
Right, but we only have seven feet rough right now. We need seven.
Okay, however you respond, as long as it's no building code relief. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval. No building code relief.
And build, and design review?
What's really being done?
A dormer.
We're leaving most of the existing window locations. The only new window locations are...
With approval, with BPDA design review and no building code.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos.
Calling BOA seven seven three eight four zero twenty-five Alaric Street. Alaric Street here?
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, it's now twelve forty-five Mc...
Could they just step out?
I think so.
Because I think this came from the small committee, and I thought they were just here. Okay.
Why did we remand it back to small committee, you remember?
I don't think they showed up.
I don't remember. Okay, let's have a motion, then.
I don't think they showed up. Well, make a chair, make a motion for denial of prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Just going to take a project out of order. This is...
You're going to take a five-minute break. He needs to talk to you.
Okay. I'm sorry, we've had a long day. We will take a break until one o'clock. Let's, let's take care of the court remand and call of the chair, please.
Okay, I'm going to call it in for the record. Calling BOA seven one nine eight one zero eight seventy-four East Sixth Street. I believe...
So, Mr. Murray?
I excuse myself.
Oh, for the record, you know, this is being livestreamed, so we don't have to do that. Ms. Marantz, as you, as you...
Should I, just for the record?
Oh, yes, of course. Please put your name and...
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is George Marantz. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston.
Okay. As you know, this, 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 a hearing will need to be published. It wasn't. And so, as a result, we need to defer it to a later date. And given the fact that it needs to be noticed, we're looking at a date of March twenty-seventh as a deferral.
Do I make a motion for deferral?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we will see you then on March twenty-seventh.
March twenty-seventh in June.
Yep.
Madam Chair, the next case. Calling BOA seven three two nine four six thirty-eight P Street.
Are all parties here at the table? Please put your name and address on the record.
Hi, Nicholas Afarakas, eight twenty-four East Third Street, South Boston.
Mike Torment, I'm Dean Torpey at seven forty-five Atlantic Ave. Counsel for thirty-eight P LLC, the recipient of the building permit.
And again, we will have to defer this again at call of the chair. We are reviewing the memo, and we understand that it needs to be the confidential memo between the law department and the board. We need to have a relook at it. So, again, my apologies, but we'll have to defer this at call of the chair. So, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, you're all set, and you will hear from the office. Okay? Thanks so much.
Madam Chair, the final cases of the day, the recommendations of the subcommittee. I'm going to call them in for the record. BOA seven eight zero three two two fifty-five McBride Street was to construct a side addition at two bedrooms and one bath and kitchen, was approved. BOA seven eight seven five 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 thirteen hundred to thirteen oh four Hyde Park Avenue was a caterers establishment. Change of occupancy from a restaurant to caterers establishment was approved. BOA seven seven zero five two four two fifty-three Huntington Avenue was to construct two shed dormers. It was approved with BPDA. BOA seven seven four seven zero eleven Prince Street was to renovate the kitchen, existing attic space, and construct new dormers in attic and extend living space to the third floor. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA seven eight five three one six nineteen Beurad Street was a kitchen remodel and closed an enlarged existing porch and accommodated a mudroom and half-bath. It was approved. Only BOA seven nine four six eight three fifteen Gilmore Terrace was to construct a new two-and-a-half-story twelve-by-twenty addition to an existing single-family dwelling. It was approved. Case BOA seven eight seven four zero three fifteen Macular Road, it was added a family room and installed a new kitchen. It was approved. And case BOA seven nine zero zero one three thirty-one Willis Street was to erect and attach one-car garage on the right side of the property. It was approved. Need a motion for the subcommittee's recommendations.
Is there a second? Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. The meeting is now adjourned.
We have the sub, we have the subcommittee here.
And will we get a Medal of Honor for that? No, we didn't save any kids, right? We wouldn't have jumped right in.